Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, December 8th, 2025. This is the last meeting of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority for 2025. And how's that better? Thank you. Welcome. No opening remarks, no announcements. Let's move right to our consent agenda. However, before we do that, we have some corrections to the October 14 minutes. You have in front of you revised minutes. There were actually two corrections, and let me point them out. On page three of five, under new business, actually, it originally said something like Lincoln Avenue channel wall replacement. It's actually changed to Bream Alley channel wall replacement and the number of $297,185.83. And then, page four of five, Eagle Eye Kirk Kramer caught another slight change.
The mowark, it might work in there.
Under Stevens Run mower. In the middle, about the fifth, sixth line down, he said that the Bobcat slope mower, not slot mower, slope mower is a low-gravity remote-control machine, et cetera. Those are the two changes. Any questions, comments about that particular part of the agenda? If not...
I will move acceptance of the consent agenda with those changes.
Thank you. A second?
One second.
Thank you. Any other comments about the agenda, bills, payrolls, and the revised meeting minutes? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, not hearing any, it passes. Thank you. Public comment? As we say, no public, no comment. So we move on to current business. Charles, the financial update, revenue and expenses, how we doing?
Year-to-date, we have collected $279,000. Spent $222,000. Currently running a small surplus of $56,000. And current liquid cash is $63,000 in the AC&amp;B checking account, and then there's the roughly $500,000 over in Pliggett, which will get used pretty quickly as we move into the next year.
Right. And I saw in the Pliggett numbers this year, there was an end-of-year accrued interest, I believe?
Yes. I don't recall what that is off the top of my head.
I think it was something like $23,000 or something in that neighborhood, which is great. I mean, that's investing our money, the public's money.
That's why we want with Pliggett.
Good move, yeah.
Yeah. It was the right thing to do. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the members? Deborah is not here today, but any update on payments and billing?
I know she mentioned that they're very slow. I think they only received one payment towards a possible lien, but they're still accepting payments, so...
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that, not in specific detail as to what's happening lately with the payments itself, but Deborah had reached out to me regarding whether we can, should, might want to send out a courtesy reminder mailer to, I'll say, property owners who have not paid. They're in the past due period, they're in the penalty phase, they're not yet outside the total cycle. In the past, the authority has done this, and I would say has achieved pretty good results. The idea being that if you can send out a couple letters at 60, 70 cents a pop, you'll probably reduce the number of certified mailings you have to send out a month or so later telling people that, you know, you've missed it, you're going to get a lien because those cost seven or eight bucks. I don't know if those have gone out yet.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
So the cycle ends at the end of the year, December 31. And then typically, when we get into January, the authority sends out those certified and first-class letters that I was speaking about a minute ago, saying that you're officially outside the payment window, we're still accepting payment, but you're on the clock. And after 30 days, the authority has the ability to file lien against you. I don't know, numbers-wise, how many people are still unpaid, but she said it was quite high, which it often is. And usually, if memory holds, when we send out these letters, half the people who get these letters pay. When we send out the certified letters, half the people-ish who get those pay. So kind of every round that you remind people of their payment obligation, it tends to get about a 50% yield, which seems worth it.
So, we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you don't have to do it, but it seems like a good idea.
Yeah, and I gave, I think Charles and I gave her the thumbs up to do it.
And then kind of looking ahead, because typically, the authority files liens in the early part of February, which is probably right around when we'll be meeting next. It'll be interesting, hopefully not challenging, but it'll be different with the new software because freedom was always what was used up till now. And we have certain information that has to go in these liens and be compiled and reviewed to make sure that we're filing them against the right people, for the right property, at the right address, which can be challenging, especially when you have out-of-town property owners. So hopefully, that all goes smoothly.
Who is going to do that review of the switched-over data? The borough staff, or you, or...
So I, good question, Kurt. What I do is I wait until I get the information from Deborah and says, you know, these are the people, these are the properties who were unpaid, and these are the people who got the certified letter. Part of the challenge in the past, and I don't know that it was necessarily anybody's fault or Freedom's fault, it's just kind of maybe how it is, would be if letters would go out to, let's say there were three siblings who co-owned property, only one of them might have gotten the letter instead of all three. You send it to the address unfiled, but if it's not accurately gone out, sometimes we hold off and resend those 30-day letters. Sometimes those properties were sold right before that run went through in the system, and then we make sure that we didn't actually get paid at the last minute. Or maybe it was sold earlier, and there was some glitch, and the letter went to a person who owned it two years ago. It's that sort of thing. So I verify the information that's sent to me before we file them.
Okay. Any questions? No questions, okay. Chad, it's your show, four or five things. Chad, could you add, as you update us, Bream Alley as well? Chad? Uh-oh.
My mic's been re-plugged here.
Kick the cord.
Very good, it worked. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Right. Excellent. Now, can you add an update on Bream Alley?
Bream Alley, yes. Yeah, and so there's kind of three things with Stevens Run that I'd like to tackle under this item on the agenda. I don't have a ton for the classification study, but I did, as Mike said, I wanted to give you a quick update on Bream Alley, and then a little bit also on our priority number one between Carlisle Street and Gilliland Alley. So first, the classification study, so if you, again, just a reminder, the goal there is to try to reclassify Stevens Run as more of a utility, for the primary reason that Penn Vest does not fund stream restorations. They only fund utility projects. So if it was classified as a pipe or a channel or something like that, then we could potentially get Penn Vest funding to help us do construction. There's also some potential implications with permitting, but that's not the main goal. The main goal is to open up some potential avenues with Penn Vest. So we did initiate that process. It's rising on our to-do list. We've just been super busy here, so I don't have a whole lot to report on at this point, but it is on our to-do list. I did talk to my stormwater team today, and they said, yes, they still have it on their to-do list, so...
Well, Chad, let me ask you, since I sign all the bills, I know that you guys billed us under that category, so they are moving ahead.
Yes. Yeah, they did research, there's a group specifically for this. This isn't the first time this happens at DEP. So we've done the research, we've got the contacts, yeah, did some, pulled some documents together for the legwork, so, yes, there is some progress on it, but I just don't have anything to report yet in terms of like responses from DEP, so... From Stevens Run, so Bream Alley, as Mike said, I'd invite you to go out there and take a look at it. The channel wall that was associated with the GMA project is essentially done. It's not completely done in terms of it still has a guide rail that gets installed across the top. Last week, they were working on replacing the concrete back in the channel, but the wall is, for the most part, done. All of the gravity wall system that was installed is essentially done, so...
All the voids are filled with concrete?
The, no, there's still some, there's still some at the springs that needs to be done. There's still the guy, and then that associated with the guide rail that goes on, and they have not yet installed the two inlets that get core-drilled then through the wall with pipe. So there's still, you know, a handful of things. My guess is it's still going to be another month yet until it's 100% done, but you can see the wall it's in. So there's an update on that, and I'm anticipating that GMA is going to be looking for our 2/3s payment towards that wall here soon as well. So it's a lump-sum line item under there, so I'm not sure when the contractor is going to actually, I mean, it's usually complete and placed, so they can't submit for the payment until it's done, but I'm anticipating that'll be coming soon. And then thirdly, the priority one wall between Gilliland and Carlisle, we've completed the survey, and one of the things, I asked Jared to pull together a schedule, because we're looking at, it was sometime in the spring of last year when we submitted the grant application for the design of the priority number two. And the idea is then to have the design of priority one done, you guys did authorize that done, prior to that grant application being due for the construction of priority number one, and that's through the flood mitigation program through DEP. So that's coming up here in the spring, so probably at one of our early meetings, January, February, depending on how our meeting cadence works out, we're going to be asking for authorization to submit that second grant application. So at one of those meetings early next year, I'll be giving you an update on the design of that wall and starting to anticipate that grant application for that next piece, so... So that's the updates on Stevens Run.
Any questions, Stevens Run? Okay, thank you, okay.
The next item is Lincoln Avenue Stormwater Pipe Replacement Project. So as you know, this is one of our capital improvement projects. It's associated with Columbia Gas. It's the North Gettysburg High Pressure Project, and it's also, we're also teaming up with Gettysburg Municipal Authority, they're replacing water lines in the same area. Wednesday this week, Wednesday evening this week, there is a public meeting, so I'll be at that meeting. The primary part of that meeting is being pulled together by Columbia Gas. They really have the biggest part of this project, it's a pretty significantly sized project that they'll be doing out, all the way out to Boyd School Road and through Strabane and Cumberland Townships. So they have a pretty large project that they're going to be undertaking. We've been meeting with, Charles and Robbie and I have been meeting with them to coordinate some specifics. We know that next year is the 250th anniversary, so there's certain dates that we don't want them to be working, but they're going to be moving full bore with multiple crews to do that project. Columbia Gas will be starting in January. So we're having a property owner meeting again on Wednesday night this week. We're going to be tagging along with that project. Our part's not nearly as big as Columbia Gas's, but we do have, we're installing new stormwater pipes, as you know, from that intersection of Lincoln at Old Harrisburg Road where it does the bend, and we're going east there over to Forest Street and then down to the, all the way down to the creek with our storm pipe. So CS Davidson's completed the survey, and we're working on a design for that, so we're coordinating our design now with Gettysburg Municipal Authority and Columbia Gas. But then we'll be tabling our design, you know, shelving, I should say, until our part of the construction is last. It's the gas project first, and then the water project, and then our storm drains very last. So we probably won't be putting our project out to bid until around mid-year is what I'm guessing. We'll be monitoring how much progress, how fast the project is with the gas project and the water project. You typically don't want to bid within, outside of 120 days of when you're going to start construction. That's your typical EJ CDC contract guidelines, so that's what we typically follow. So we'll try to be bidding within 120 days of when we think we're going to be starting, so I'll keep you guys in the loop as we move forward there, and like I said, probably at one of your earlier meetings next month, I'll be showing you the design, going over our final estimated price tag and everything. Of course, we won't know the final price until we get it bid, but just to make sure that we have the funds to be able to pay for this thing.
The estimated price is $471?
Yeah, it was, it was between, I remember it being between $400,000 and $500,000, $471 sounds right. So once we get, and that was based off of a master plan, you know, very early without full survey.
Oh, yeah.
So now that we have full survey, I'll be able to zoom in on that number a little bit better. Now, we aren't going to be, the other, the other, the other component to that, too, just as a reminder, is we aren't going to be doing, until we end up getting all three of these utility projects done, and I discussed this with Robbie, we're not going to have time probably to get all of the paving done. So the paving for this project probably won't happen until the spring of the following year. That's just the nature of the beast. I believe that is it with that project. Do you have any questions about that before I move on? Charles, I got a copy of this. So the next item on our agenda is the North Washington Street Stormpipe Project. This is the MedEd pole that was punched through our storm pipe. It was associated with our Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project, and if you can remember, there was originally, there was a concern about a sewer smell, so our contractor was looking into the pipes to see if they could figure out that. Luckily, GMA did some televising to see if they could figure, see if there was any issues. They found out that there is no sewer issue, but while they were doing that televising, they found this issue with this MedEd pole being punched through our storm pipe. So it was kind of a blessing in disguise that that happened because we wouldn't have otherwise found this. So what we've done is created a document here. My engineers pulled this together. We put it on a Borough Letterhead because we anticipate that this will be coming from Charles to MedEd. But my goal with this discussion is to kind of show you, this is a draft. As you can see, it's still highlighted with, you know, it doesn't have a date or anything. Get your input on the options for resolve here, and there's two big things is, I have laid out two potential options for resolve, and then also the limits of restoration that we want to require MedEd to do with this. So I'll just, I'll just run through these documents here with you real quick, and then I'll see if I can get some feedback from the authority here. The first page basically just recaps the history on this. It's showing that we asked them to move the pole, there's a pole that, we did ask them to move a few feet, they moved it a little over two feet more than what they were supposed to, which ended up pushing it through the side of our pipe. So that just recaps the history of that. The second page there is the televising, the pictures from the televising. You can see how the pole punctured the side of the pipe, pushed it in, and that third picture there is on the third page is a pretty good detail of just how badly damaged the pipe is. It's to the point where I'm really concerned about being able to line it. It's so badly damaged that I feel like the best option's a replacement, and so I added a paragraph there on that third page that basically says that the borough expects the storm pipe to be fixed at equal to or better-than condition, including the sidewalk, concrete, pavement, everything that we just put in brand-new. So then I say about required corrective action. There was, we came up with two options, and again, this is one of the things I want to get your opinion on. Option A is you're digging it up and you're fixing the pipe, all right? So there's a lot of details that go with that. We do like and allow these marmac couplings, but it just can't be a push-on slip-on joint. There's some details associated with that. But then I get down to the next page, on page four, I go into a option B. We did not go into a lot of research with that, just because, A, I don't know that it is even going to work. I'm really concerned that it even will work, and so I didn't want to spend anybody's time or money heading down that rabbit hole. But I did continue, I kept it on here just to get your input on this, to see if that's something that we would allow MedEd, if they wanted to do the research, to see if it's a lining option, with no guarantee that we would agree to it. So I mean, what are your thoughts there? After you see these pictures, do you even want to allow them to have the option of trying to, if they can show that it's structurally sound, to be able to line it, or do you want to just eliminate that option altogether?
Any, I have some comments, but anybody else? Want to go first?
It seems, based on your photograph here, that it's pushed in fairly significantly, so to line it, are you going to reduce the flow through there anyway?
Yeah, they would have to, in order to be able to do it, they would have to take a machine up there and basically cut those rocks out to reopen up the capacity and then line it. It, I don't even, again, I don't even know if it's feasible, so that's what I'm kind of thinking. Like, I didn't even want to waste my time going into the specifics, that, you know, I mean, the engineering on how it would be done, but it would be, it would be difficult, and then I would question the longevity, you know, the life that you get out of that kind of a product.
My comment is going to be, I wouldn't even include it, I wouldn't even give it an option.
To redo the first option, to replace it, do you have a rough idea what it's going to cost MedEd to do that work?
We haven't ran any cost estimates yet, ultimately, because again, I didn't want to spend you guys' money doing that cost. That's up to them to figure that out, but it's not going to be cheap. It's not a $5,000 or $10,000. If I had to guess, it's a $50,000 line item.
I haven't seen a reason why we spend any more money on it.
I agree.
And option A sounds to me like the only way to go. I do have another issue, though, I mentioned at the last meeting, and that is, okay, we had a violation of, is it 811 procedure?
Yeah, PA one call, sure, yep.
You have one call. What was the, how did that happen? Do you have our location of our new pipes in that system when they made the call?
Well, I might have to punt this one over to Robbie, because I don't handle 811, but I do know that there are some things that MedEd, we've had a lot of correspondence over the past month here because of all kinds of issues with MedEd, but I do understand that they are able to do some work without having to do 811 or PA one call. So I'm not sure if this is, this falls into that category or not, but Rob, do you want to, you want to add?
100% sure on that one, too.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we don't have the answers, but I think we...
I have to investigate that.
Pardon me?
I'm going to have to investigate that. I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should have answers here because, as I mentioned before, or we mentioned before, it's a fairly big safety concern. It could have been a natural gas line they drilled into, could have been electric, yeah, all kinds of things worse than stormwater, but the process, the 811 process is there for a very, very important reason, and to have that violation is a very serious thing. So I think we need to know, did the 811 system have our new pipe location in there? And if they didn't, why didn't they? And then if they did have it in, then the question goes back to MedEd, is why did you not follow the system? Either way you look at it, it's a very serious thing that happened here, and we need more than just, yeah, you got to fix it. You got to fix the system, otherwise we're setting ourselves up for potentially bad things down the road.
Sure.
So who's going to write that report?
To the PA, you mean to PA one call, or...
Guys got to coordinate and everything, and, yeah, you have to figure out what part of the system broke down and why. I'm not looking to punish anybody, but you got to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, there would have to be an AVR reported.
AVR? What's that?
Alleged violation report.
Okay, well, it's pretty clear, though, a violation.
And it has to be done through a one-call system, so like I said, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to look to see if there were one-calls put out, and if they were, why the pipe wasn't marked.
Yeah, it's just certain number of things. I mean, it should be simple, the pipe's in there, you call one call, and they make sure they miss it. That didn't happen, so, you know, one of, there's not that many options here.
Right. I do know, I do know there was an issue at that site when they went to drill that hole. They drilled where the stake was, and they couldn't, the hole kept collapsing as they were drilling. And I don't know if that's because the sidewalk was, the old sidewalk was tore up, and there was a bunch of fill in there.
Does that mean they moved the hole to accommodate the drilling?
They may have had to, but they should have notified somebody to do that, because it, you know, they couldn't, they couldn't put, plant a pole in because the hole kept caving in, so, and the hole kept getting wider as it caved in.
Okay, well, yeah, I think we should pursue it enough to get some firm answers to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Right.
Well, that might be added to the letter that's sent to them as a paragraph saying that on top of this, we'd like to know what the 811 situation was. that on top of this, we'd like to know what the P, the 811 situation was that would have avoided this.
Right.
And then let them respond to that.
Right.
Having worked for utility guys, they should be, they should have a, we used to have near miss reports because they're, they're almost as, as important as the accident reports because, you know, you get so many near misses till you hit one.
Right, right.
You sure got one here.
Right.
Yeah, they did. So that, that ought to be part of our correspondence is what we're, we want to informally report on what happened on your end with the 811.
So who's going to send the letter?
It'll come from me.
Okay.
Yeah, ultimately, I, I have it, if you can see on page five, I have it set up here with Charles' signature. So I'll get rid of that option B and then I guess I'll pass this over to you Robbie for, to add anything about the 811 after you get your chance to do that and then we'll have Charles send it out.
And it's a pole that's on the, that would be the south side of Racehorse Alley as you come out in the sidewalk. It's this one right here.
Yep, yeah, if you look at that photograph, if you're looking, you can see the other inlet's kind of behind it, just to the right of the pole. And if you drew a straight line, you can see how those, the two inlets would connect. That's, that's how the, the pipe goes right beside that pole. That's in photograph number one. Same thing with photograph number two, pole just on the right side. Now this is looking south on Washington Street, Racehorse Alley's on the right and, and the inlet's up there.
Yeah, they align.
Yep, and then the pole's right beside where that pipe's, that pipe is. And then, and then I also included, and I'm still going to be cleaning this draft sketch plan up a little bit, but you can see the, the pipe between that inlet at Racehorse Alley and the new inlet with I-8. And then we also showed the old pole location, the proposed new pole location and actually, and where they actually put it in. So you can kind of see where we needed to move it to, to get it out of the curb ramp and then they moved it two, about two more feet closer to that pipe. But like Robbie was saying, their pole, their hole was collapsing, so they moved it two feet closer to the pipe and that's whenever they damaged the pipe. I can't imagine that, that MedEd's going to argue with us, that they're going to clearly have to fix this.
You never know.
But, and I guess that would be where if they, you know, if they would argue with it or complain about the fixing, that's whenever we would have to further pursue this with 811 or the PUC and I can't imagine it going much further than that at that point. But, but my only other question to you guys, so I'm going to get rid of that option B. My only other option is the limits of, of paving. For, for the concrete, they can just go to some joints in concrete. They, they saw cut along joints and they can tie that in fairly seamlessly. But as far as the asphalt goes, if you look at my plan, I have on the left side of that plan in the street, you can see the loops that are in by the, the traffic signal on the left side. And I say begin repave full lane, travel lane as a, as a saw cut right at the backside of those loops so you don't have to get into the, to the traffic signal. And then I'm figuring, you can see that, that there's a dotted hatch pattern on that north, I'm sorry, that would be the western side of, of Washington Street, that they would have to repave out to the center line of, of the street. The question is, is if you go to the east side of that picture, it says repave, repave full lane to railroad tracks. So that would be the question. Do we want to have another joint in that rate, that road or, I mean, it's a brand new road? Or do we want to have them mill and repave all the way to the railroad tracks?
Yes.
All the way.
All the way.
Why not? I mean, they ruined the-
They ruined a brand new road, like not even months old or, you know, I'm, there's other things I'm going to add to this letter, just so you know.
We got more, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So if John was here, he was probably talking about those poles, so.
That's a different topic, but yeah, that could be a whole separate letter.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm not sure what else you're going to add, Charles.
Formal, formal complaint to the PUC is going to be added.
Okay, that's good. But I would rather not see a long laundry list, as the council has, we want to focus on this.
Agreed.
So, yeah, like, I mean, like- Charles said, we, this is the, this is the input that we can give from, from CS Davidson, from engineering perspective with the numbers and the history and the details and then ultimately we'll kick it over to Charles and, and Robbie can add some information there about the, the PA one call process. If you, if you can get anything figured out there with that and then we'll, we'll get it sent.
Well, I, I think what I'm hearing is that we need to be assertive with this and, Charles, I trust your judgment, to write an assertive letter to get them to correct this problem that they caused and they ought to fix the whole thing because they screwed up. Certainly in my opinion and I think in the opinion of the board. So go for it and, you know, as, as soon as you feel comfortable doing it, please do it. Send that letter. Any other comments? Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, I think the only other thing that I was going to say here is that I did include in here too, you can see on page five of that, that letter, I asked for them to give us a schedule. We're, we're looking to try to get this. I don't know that there's like an imminent failure issue with this, but this isn't something that we want to let go for a year. So I did ask for them to, to provide a schedule. So should they respond and give us a schedule, we'll make sure we, we relay that back to you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments? Charles, Senator McCormick?
Yeah, so we had the privilege of meeting with Senator McCormick here in the Borough Building on November 17th. We, we were kind of sworn to, to keep that quiet. Senator McCormick did not want it to be known that he was in town. He was here for business specifically with the Borough and the National Park Service and a couple other folks in town. It wasn't something on his public schedule per se. Nonetheless, we did have him for a lunch here catered in the Borough Building. He was accompanied by his Chief of Staff, Ryan Alment. So between the two of them, this was a very significant meeting. It was also confirmed with us by the Senator himself that Gettysburg is the first municipality that the Senator has visited. So I think that speaks a lot to the folks that we're working with, with Cozen O'Connor, who largely made, made this happen for us. I was impressed with the Senator's level of engagement. He was very versed on what it is we're trying to do here. He was versed in our obstacles that we're trying to overcome as it relates to the raise and now the build grant funding application process and procedures. He was asking very specific detailed questions about our experiences with that program, where we view system failures to be in that program. It was just a very straightforward, forthright conversation, very good back and forth conversations between the folks in the room and that, the folks in the room were very limited. Mike Malawiki, the Chair of this Board, myself, the Facilities Manager at the Municipal Authority, Engineer Clayball, and then Jill Sellers with Main Street Gettysburg. The Senator was also very interested to learn that this is not just a Borough project, that this is a collaborative effort, which is why we had the, the senior leadership in all those organizations present with the Senator that afternoon. So again, just for the public, when we're trying, when we talk about the Baltimore Street project, we're talking about a collaborative effort between the Borough, Main Street Gettysburg, Rabbit Transit, Gettysburg Municipal Authority, the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority and actually Columbia Gas, who is always at the table with us when we are doing road work. He also mentioned, you know, he, he kind of asked us the question, you know, the definition of insanity, this is coming up in the next year. We're going to be at our sixth time trying to get the, the raise slash build grant funding. He says, isn't that the definition of insanity? And then he himself said, is this a project that could, as he was kind of more asking a question to his Chief of Staff, is this a, an opportunity for an earmark? Which, you know, in Washington, used to be a dirty word, but I guess earmarks are kind of back now, which is actually how we got the Gettysburg Welcome Center funded. That was an earmark through Congressman Joyce's office. So that's on his radar, not speaking for him other than that, but he, he, he brought it up as a possibility himself. He is aware of what we're going to do next year with America 250. He brought that up himself. So he knows what we're doing here. We have him, we have his ear. Where we go from here, we are definitely going to be engaged with him. He gave us some homework to do, which we're still doing on research about cost benefit analysis, those types of things to get back to him with so that when we do formally apply, I believe that will open in February, I think it was, that, you know, as the, the folks out at the Department of Transportation begin to evaluate all these projects, he will be able to call the Secretary and communicate with him directly that Gettysburg needs to be duly considered for an approval. I don't know if you'd like to add any of your thoughts to that meeting?
I came away with the feeling that he was genuinely engaged. He was very interested. He did his homework. He asked us, I was impressed with the questions he asked. He obviously read the stuff that was sent and I, I am an optimist, so I would say that he would be an advocate for us. I'm also realistic and I know, you know, a little bit about the politics of life, but I think he was genuine and, and he understands Gettysburg a little bit more now and I think it was a good meeting. And, you know, hats off to Cozen O'Connor and that group because they delivered. We would not have had this meeting without them. I'm convinced of it.
That is, that is absolutely 100% correct.
That was a good investment.
He, he also knew the granular level detail of things of, he understands our economic challenges, that he, he, he knew we were about 44% tax exempt. And so he was asking questions like, are there templates of other municipalities across the country that are surrounded literally by federal lands where most of that property is exempt from taxes and, and we can't really find any? So I think we're really a kind of unique, there is a few, but, but there are a few, but not many. So we're, we're kind of very unique in that, in that regard. And so he, he was aware of that and so despite the, the misnomer out there that everyone might think we're rolling in the cash here, we, when we really aren't, he, he understands that.
Any questions from, from the board?
For what it's worth, his Chief of Staff was a former state senator for a number of years.
Yeah.
And then made the move to federal level, in a different role.
Okay. Any other business? Now we go to new business and we're talking about dates for next year and-
I think we're following the pattern of trying to meet every other month, although I think on our calendars, we have the, the meeting set for the second Monday every month. And I would encourage us to do that. And I think we need to have a meeting every January to set new officers and elect new people to the board. So any, any comments about that?
I, I don't have a comment on your meeting schedule other than I think it's wise for you to meet in January and not do your rework until February. I think that's just a little bit clunky. Whether you do it January and then even months, February, April, June and so on, or whether you just roll with the odd months of February, March, May, or schedule them all and just have a anticipation that you're going to cancel them. I don't really have an opinion on that. I, I would just note that, and I forget who is up, but one of you is up this year for reappointment.
Pat.
Yeah, so, and that's appointed by the council. That's not a, a reappointment within this body. So I'll let that to you and the powers that be.
I think Pat is up and at last indication, he was willing to continue and I think that becomes a Borough Council-
Yes.
-issue to, to actually reappoint. So we will, we'll meet in January and we can discuss then in January how we want to, you know, schedule the meetings. Every other month seems to work, but-
So for now, we plan on the second Monday of January, right?
Right.
Which would be the 13th or the 12th?
I believe it's 12.
12.
12.
We'll need to advertise that.
January 12.
Because we just advertised for the calendar year of '25.
So Karen, can you, can see that, that gets advertised?
Okay. Just that one date, right? Did you anywhere date?
And then we can go, the, the body can then decide what to do from there as far as meetings are concerned. Any other input?
Comments? Okay. Public comments? None out there? All right. To hear a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Pat. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. This meeting is over. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the Borough Council for the Borough of Gettysburg for December 8th, 2025. If you all please wouldn't mind taking a moment to silence your cell phones today. We do ask also that everybody has signed in over there at the door, particularly if you intend to speak today. If you wouldn't all mind rising and joining us with a moment of silence, and we'll follow that with a pledge to the flag. All right, folks, a few announcements. We will be having a town hall here December 10th at 7:00 PM. This will be conducted at the behest of Columbia Gas. They would like to brief members of the government and members of the public as to their upcoming infrastructure projects that will be going on in and around Gettysburg Borough, Cumberland Township, and Straband Township. So please put that on your calendars and take the opportunity to come here about what to expect in the coming year. An executive session was conducted by the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg, immediately following the adjournment of its monthly work session, public meeting held on November 24th, 2025, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide updated information and to discuss matters involving the employment or appointment of current prospective or former borough employees, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, would lead to the disclosure of information or confidentiality protected by law. At this point, I would take a moment, take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. There is one slight adjustment we do need to make to this agenda. The second motion establishes a date for a public hearing for a liquor license hearing for, as January 26th at 6:30, but we actually will need to do that on January 12th at 6:30 ahead of our January business meeting. Does anybody have any opposition to accepting the amended agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We have an agenda. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the Borough Council business meetings on November 10th, 2025.
So moved.
And the Borough Council work session held on November 24th, 2025 is presented.
Those two. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, omissions, errors, corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We get to start tonight with a special presentation, and I'm really quite happy to hand the microphone over to Sergeant Evans to make two presentations that are very welcome.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to recognize two of these guys. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Officer Alec Lottarello for his promotion to detective. Detective Lottarello has come to us with a background in the U.S. military. He joined the U.S. Army as an infantryman from 2014 to 2017. He attained his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Penn State in 2001. He worked as a federal police officer for a Department of Defense, the Navy Support Activity in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. He was there from 2001 to 2023. He joined the Gettysburg Police Department in 2023, and he recently begun his master's in business administration with the concentration in leadership, and is expected to graduate in August of 2027. Officer Lottarello has consistently demonstrated investigative skill and professionalism that made him an outstanding candidate for his promotion to detective. He's already taken and led complex investigations, including sexual assaults, assaults, criminal trespass, burglary, and firearms-related cases. He's done, he's consistently demonstrated his initiative and investigative skills. He continues to strengthen his qualifications through ongoing training. Detective Lottarello's proven performance and willingness to take on challenging and sensitive assignments clearly demonstrate his fully, that he is fully prepared for his responsibilities as a detective. Proud to have him serve our community and proud to have him in the role of criminal investigator. I also want to recognize that he's completed his two years of service here with the Gettysburg Police Department, so he is going to get also the rank of patrolman first class. So, Alec, I'd like to present you with this certificate. All right, last but definitely not least, I want to recognize Master Patrol Officer William Orth. I've known Bill for a while now. He's had his distinguished career in law enforcement upon graduating a police academy at the Criminal Justice Training Center in Chippensburg in 1993. He began his part-time career here in law enforcement with the Gettysburg Police Department. Also, in 1994, he was hired part-time. Then he transitioned to his full-time of service in 2004. Over the course of more than two decades of full-time duty, Master Patrol Officer William Orth has made significant contributions to the Gettysburg Police Department and his community. He served for four years as a member on the Adams County Drug Task Force. He was a criminal investigator for the department for an additional four years after that, solving complex cases in the pursuit of justice for victims and their families. Officer Orth's commitment to the community extended beyond investigative work. He previously served as a member of the department's motorcycle unit. He is currently a member of our mounted patrol. He presently is acting sergeant for Patrol Squad A, offering leadership and drawing on over three decades of law enforcement experience. Today, we recognize Master Patrol Officer William Orth for his many years of honorable service and his commitment and dedication to this community. I'm extremely proud to give him this plaque as his former partner, as a colleague, and definitely as my friend. So, congrats, Billy.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Evans, and thank you, Billy. Thank you, Alec. I really appreciate the leadership roles you both have stepped into here. All right, so we're about to start public comment here. Again, it's a full room, so can I see a show of hands of people who intend to lodge a public comment here today? Okay, so it looks like about 10, so it looks like we should be able to get that in without too many onerous restrictions. So please, folks, we ask that you use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes. We need your name and address of residence. Oh, I'm sorry, and this first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on another topic, we'll ask you to wait till the second public comment section of the evening. Public comment. Can you hit the button on the mic there? I think you might be off.
Good evening. That's better.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Goodmistad. I live at 307 Baltimore Street. I'm not sure how long my voice will hold out, so this is going to be short. You're lucky. I just wanted to mention that I've been coming to meetings for a long, long time, and I would love to say, please don't rush this through, but I know you haven't done that. It's been around for quite a while. But there also, there is no deadline. It's not like this has to be, the voting for the ordinance has to be finished by just the end of December of 2025. So a few extra months to take another look at this. I've never seen so much interaction with Borough Council from residents since the casino project. And so I think a lot of people in this room, and not people who are not in this room, have really invested interest in this, and I do hope that you would just take a step back. Let's look at it a little bit longer because if it's been this long, what's another month or two? And I hope that you, when everybody runs for office, they say they want to listen to the people, and I'm really hoping that you all listen to the people who think that this needs just a little bit more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Public comment.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Stangor from 275 Ridge Avenue. I want to thank you all for the staff and council for all the hard work that you've done this year. I know it's a lot, and particularly the council, there are not too many people that want to do what you do, and we really do appreciate the time you put in. So thank you again, and happy holidays. I was neutral, I think, on this idea of the taller buildings a couple of years ago, but I've become less and less supportive as time has gone on. I don't think that now is the time to rezone the revitalization district west of Carlisle to allow more tall buildings. The modern buildings, we know, don't fit in Gettysburg's character. They're not historically correct. The Park Service and a lot of other people have spoken out about that. The decision is very unpopular with the residents. I know people say, some people are for, some people are against, but I believe there are a lot more people against this than there are for it. Your own planning commission has said it's a bad idea. Will these buildings make the borough money? Will the station project make the borough money? You know, I'm frankly a little bit doubtful. The proposed 26 budget, for some reason, has a potential line item suggesting there might someday be about $260,000 of income from the station project, but there was no corresponding item in the expenses category. If you need to hire even one, if we need to hire even one more police officer to patrol that area, that's going to eat up a big chunk of that money, not to mention potential increased costs for fire, for stormwater, for EMS. We might need road improvements due to increased traffic. Who knows? We might need a new parking garage if this one fills up, and there are going to be other expenses that none of us have thought about. The station project could be great, or it could be a bust. The apartments not, might not fill up. There's a lot of new apartments being built around the county that are going to be probably cheaper to rent. This is going to be in a very expensive building, and I'm pretty sure the apartments are not going to be cheap. The outlet, there's also a concern, at least on my part, that the retail on the first floor might not all fill up. One thing we don't need is more empty storefronts. The outlet mall has become a new destination for small shops around town that aren't doing well in the borough and think they'll do better out there. So these are going to be expensive apartments. Is it going to be the case that the people who work in our shops and our restaurants can live there? I don't know. There's no provision for affordable housing. But the station project is a perfect test case. We can try it out before we open up the other areas of the revitalization district. We all know, we've been told over and over again, that once a property is zoned for these higher buildings, if somebody comes and they want to build there, there's no way to stop them. I think Tim Harrison has been very responsible. He's listened, but we don't know who might come to these other properties. So I'd ask you to please wait before you make this decision to see how the station project goes. In any case, I don't think you should make the decision tonight for a different reason. It would be nice to hear from Jeff Ru, and it would be nice to hear from Chad Allen's replacement. They're the ones who are going to be responsible for this decision after the first of the year. You don't need to make the decision tonight. I encourage you to take a vote about whether you should take it tonight, but I really think this lame duck council should not be making the decision. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
I'm Marty Qualley. I live at 107 West Broadway. I will use the same disclaimer that I tried to use in an article in the paper. I do not represent the opinions of the Board of County Commissioners. These are my own personal opinions. I do support these changes in the ordinance, and I had to jump up real quick after Chuck there because I don't see any of you as lame ducks. Some of you actually asked me years ago, when you ran for Borough Council, because I had served on council, what's it about? And some of you should be able to quote right back to me. Listen, learn, listen again, and then make your decisions. I do not see value in pushing this back farther. You have already deliberated more, met more, discussed with the public more, this change than we did on council when the casino proposal came. Mr. Eastman and Mrs. Stoll are probably the only two here who were also in this room at that time. I knocked on doors in Ward 1, and three people supported the casino. Three. But if you read the paper and you heard the public comment, it seemed like everybody supported it. You know, the council vote was clear. Public comment matters. Listening to the public matters. Pushing off decisions farther and farther so new people Pushing off decisions farther and farther so new people can be added to the mix is not a good practice for government. You need to make your decisions and move on. So, I support the changes you've made. I've supported the process you guys have gone through this entire time. I am so glad that people are commenting. Not that I want to encourage you, but other elected officials, other councils, supervisors, they don't get this many people to come in and have comments. Period. The challenge is often, if everybody in town knew what was going on, read the paper, and came out, you would get a lot more comments. So, I know some of you do take the time to not just listen to the room and read the paper, but also to get out and talk to your friends and neighbors. So, hopefully, you have heard enough from the public about this, the totality of this ordinance, and you still support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
My name is Wes Eyer. I live at 1138 Long Lane in Gettysburg. I didn't think I would be agreeing with Commissioner Quality, Qualley, I should say, on this point, but indeed, I do. I think you need to listen to public comment, and the best way to do that is to postpone tonight's vote on the new zoning ordinance and instead to take steps to put in place a referendum in the coming months. If public comment is so important, the best, and I should add that 2026 is a midterm election year. Turnouts at the elections should be quite high. I'm not so sure, I really don't know who on council supports this new ordinance, and I'm, of course, I'm talking primarily about the building height issue. I don't know who supports it or who doesn't support it, but I suspect that at least a few of you, a couple of you, may have, be on the fence, so to speak. The best way to understand what the community wants is to allow them to have their say, all of them to have their say, not just those who are able to attend public comment meetings like this one. Government by a referendum is usually not a good idea, certainly if you're debating and voting on whether or not to increase taxes. People are going to vote on their own personal interest. This issue is completely the opposite. No one has a personal interest, really, in whether or not this building height issue has changed, but a lot of people have strong opinions, and the best way to gain those opinions to your benefit as Commissioner Quality, Qualley, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but you are a high-quality commissioner. I strongly urge you to hold a referendum in the coming months and allow people to have their say. Now, I don't know, I'm sure Attorney Eastman will know the answer to this, but if you're unwilling to have a decision-making referendum, perhaps you could have an informational referendum so you get a sense of what all the voters in the borough of Gettysburg, how they feel about this building height issue. I agree completely with what a few people have said. There's no hurry for this thing. We've been, you know, waiting, I think, I heard President Moon say, four years or something like that. The borough has not gone to hell in a handbag in the last four years just because we haven't revised the zoning ordinance, and it won't go to hell in a handbag if we wait another year or two. But the best way to get public opinion is to allow voters to express their opinion, and I urge you all to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment.
I'm Charles Strauss. I live at 43 West Broadway. I have had the pleasure of serving on the Planning Commission for 10 years, but I represent only myself with these comments. And of course, I'm also speaking about Chapter 27, the zoning ordinance, and I realize that you had a workshop at which there seemed to be consensus that you were comfortable with this document, and then you had the hearing, and then now it's time for a vote. I understand the process and also get that postponing might seem like a failure, or it might seem like the deliberation is over, and so it's time to move forward. But I'm here just to make one final plea, to see if any of you have changed your minds since the workshop after seeing the considerable public comment, and so I have a few remarks here about why I think that this would be a misguided decision. So, as you know, the Planning Commission received a document from an ad hoc committee that had been working on it with a consultant for a number of months, and then we took our time to go through that document and then make our own proposal to you. Some of those recommendations, in fact, most of those recommendations, you accepted, and then a few you did not, and this would be one related to building height, maximum building height in the Revitalization District. When we received that document, it had an allowance for 72 feet on the east side of Carlisle, but interestingly, not on the west side of Carlisle, and we took an action to propose that all sides of Carlisle in the Revitalization District stay at 48 feet. Now, that has nothing to do with the ongoing development that we are reviewing now for the so-called Gettysburg Station Project. They are grandfathered in, as you know, in the current zoning ordinance, but it was our signal that should that project not transpire, that we would return to business as usual at 48 feet. That is why we decided as a planning commission, that's why I decided as a planning commission member, to vote for 48 feet. But then, after that process, when you took time to make your own edits, you included 72 feet back in on the east side of, on the west side of Carlisle. And I just think that this is both financially or economically irresponsible and perhaps also an exercise in historic vandalism in our community, and here's why I think that. The 72-feet proposal is simply a destruction of scale. A 72-foot building is roughly six stories tall, standing 1.5 or three times the height of our traditional built environment. I don't see this as compatible with what we currently experience. In fact, I see it as dominating our visual landscape for two reasons. One, national standards. This move would directly violate the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation, the gold standard for preservation nationwide. These standards demand that new construction be, quote, "compatible with the massing size and scale of the historic environment to protect its integrity." So, I realize this is in the historic district and not regulated by these standards, but we also know that our community is historic and filled with character-rich development all through the borough, and a 72-foot building next to a 36-foot restaurant or hotel is not compatible, and in my view, creates a jarring visual disruption, which I believe some business owners have shared with you specifically related to their parcels. Second, the pedestrian experience, and I spoke about this at your hearing. Massive structures overpower the pedestrian and fundamentally change how a person experiences our town on foot. They break the human-scaled rhythm that defines our streetscapes. The argument that we need 72 feet for growth and density, in my view, is a false choice. We can grow responsibly by adhering to the principles of Strong Towns, which I know some of you are familiar with, a national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping cities and towns achieve financial resiliency through civic engagement. They have great books. They have a great website, podcasts. Strong Town advocates for small incremental development that builds long-term financial resilience. Instead of chasing large, risky 72-foot projects, we could encourage infill development up to the existing 48-feet limit, which we do not realize here in most parts of our town. First, for financial resilience, Strong Town's research shows that towns built incrementally by small-to-mid-level local developers utilizing existing infrastructure are financially more stable. Large, high-rise projects often require extensive public subsidies, put all the risks in one developer, and strain our existing utility and parking infrastructure. Second, density could be achieved incrementally. We can achieve significant density and create new housing by simply fully utilizing our existing zoning capacity. Our 48-feet limit allows for three to four stories, which creates dense, mixed-use housing that is more affordable for local developers and maintains the walkable historic scale that tourists come here to experience and residents enjoy every day. And I would share that in the process working with a consultant, I asked personally several times for some research or some strategies on how to incentivize this type of development, infill. Another option that we had on the table at some point--
To conclude here.
Last point, another option we had at some point was N cap development, where how, elevation could be higher and could be better accommodated. So, for those reasons, I just consider this the right time to take a pause and to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance related to maximum height.
Thank you, Charles. Public comment.
Hi. My name's Tyler Cole. I'm from 119 Barlow Street. I did not raise my hand for public comment, but I felt compelled after hearing my fellow community members, and I wanted to say, I ask you all to please look at me. I've grown up here. I've lived here my whole life, and I believe that I don't understand the complexities of the reasons of why we're trying to delve into this. I ask you to look at me, please. I don't understand the complexities of why we're delving into this. You guys, there's complexities that we don't understand as a community that you guys are seeking, and I respect that. But at the same time, I was born and raised on hollow ground. These are hollow ground. People have died and bled into these, our ground that we live in, and I just think to myself, like, that's something that we need to, like, respect, and I don't know if, like, building something that is tall is going to disrespect that or not, but at the same time, I believe that gaining a tax basis from more people in our community is a goal that is important for some sort of reason, but at the same time, we need to keep in mind that money's not everything. Maybe a tax basis is something we need to sacrifice to be able to cherish and honor our hollow ground that we live in. We have, we have a, it's a privilege to be here. People around U.S. do not have the same feeling that we have in a place where we are living on hollow ground, where people have fought and sacrificed their lives to do something good for the better of humanity, and I don't know what that means. I know you guys are considering things that are important to our community that none of us can completely understand, but at the same time, we got to consider that, too, where maybe, maybe tax basis and more money is not always the answer, but I'm not certain on anything, and I respect all of you, and I thank you for your service, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Public comment.
I have spent a lot of time reflecting on why this rezoning process has felt so difficult for so many of us. I believe it comes down to one core issue, and that's public trust. Trust wasn't broken all at once. It slipped away step by step, starting at the very beginning when the task force met behind closed doors and residents were turned away from participating. Later, at the first town hall at the Rec Park, residents were told that no questions would be taken, and the sense of exclusion deepened. Yet, there was also a moment when trust began to grow again. When the Planning Commission received the draft ordinance, they approached their work with genuine transparency, open dialogue, patience, and civility. They allowed tough conversations. They welcomed differing perspectives. They listened with respect, and even during heated moments, they treated residents as partners in the process and not obstacles. That behavior matters. It builds trust even when people disagree. During those meetings, residents asked for a cost-benefit analysis on extended height. That information was never provided. After careful discussion, the Planning Commission recommended keeping the existing height limit because no evidence, no studies, no data, no expert assessments supported raising it. Even the consultant acknowledged that the number 600 new units came from national trends and not from a local housing study. These decisions were evidence-based, and because of that, public trust grew. However, when extended height was added back into the ordinance without explanation or supporting data, trust was shaken again, and when residents concerned, expressed concern, the response in the newspaper was to call those concerns fearmongering. Words like that do not build trust. They erode it. Trust cannot grow where people feel dismissed, judged, or spoken to with frustration or disrespect. True transparency is not selective. It means sharing the full picture, benefits, risks, costs, uncertainties, so residents and council members can make informed decisions together. Transparency welcomes questions, not discouraging them. It means being open with information, not defensive. It means remembering that public comment is not a burden. It is a gift. It shows that people still care. Because of this, I want to propose two constructive, community-driven solutions that can help rebuild trust while giving council the independent expertise needed to make well-informed decisions going forward. First, Gettysburg would greatly benefit from an established community financial and economic analysis committee. This volunteer committee, made up of residents with professional experience in banking, accounting, economics, and business management, would provide independent, evidence-based financial analysis of zoning proposals, long-term expenses, and potential revenue opportunities that haven't been discussed with the Borough Council. It would give a council a clear understanding of cost, trends, and fiscal impacts so that major decisions are based on facts rather than assumptions. Second, Gettysburg should consider forming a community funding and grant task force to help identify grant opportunities, assist with grant writing, and build stronger partnerships at the state and federal levels. With millions of visitors placing extra demands on our police department and infrastructure, a coordinated volunteer effort would allow Gettysburg to secure more outside funding, reducing the financial burden on residents and decreasing the need for costly consultants and lobbyists. Both initiatives are practical, cost-effective, and rooted in the strengths of our community, and both would go a long way towards strengthening transparency, improving communication, and rebuilding trust. If we want to build trust together, could council members supportly, supporting this openly answer these reasonable questions? Has a cost-benefit analysis been completed? Has a housing study been conducted? And those who support the extended height, explain clearly their reasoning before the vote. Answering these questions openly would go a long way toward healing this process and restoring faith in our local government. The reasons behind the decision goes a long way in establishing trust. I want to close by saying this. Trust is not about perfection. It is about how we treat people, especially when we disagree. It grows through civility, patience, humility, and the courage to acknowledge when something has gone wrong and to correct it. If we can continue to commit these values together, then even difficult debates can make our community stronger, and trust slowly, sincerely can grow again. In the same spirit, I respectfully ask the council to not pass the zoning ordinance as written tonight, and instead, please consider adopting it with the recommended 48-foot height limit and allow these two types of community-driven initiatives an opportunity to be tried. If in the future, extended height is justified with clear evidence and community trust behind it, the ordinance could be amended at that time. By choosing a transparent, measured approach, you honor the public's trust and allow our community to move forward together with confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Public comment.
Darren Glass, 29 East Middle Street. In full disclosure, I'm a member of the zoning hearing board, although I do not speak for them and have not discussed anything I'm going to say with any member of them, so I certainly do not speak for them. I just want to say, I feel somewhat like I might be one of the only people in the borough who actually doesn't really care about this height issue personally. I've heard, I have lots of good friends, lots of people in this room that I very much respect, who have opinions on both sides of the issue that are very passionate and very well reasoned, and I don't envy you guys having to make this decision. What I do feel pretty strongly about is this is not, the vote tonight is not a vote about height. This is not a height ordinance. We're not 2019 dealing with just height. We're dealing with a full, comprehensive rezoning, and many people in this borough, many of you are planning commission members. I don't know what the previous speaker was talking about. I was at some of those ad hoc town halls and things. I felt like it's been a very open and transparent process where the consultant did take questions, and I did speak with them, as well as members of the ad hoc committee and planning and council over the last two, three, four years. And I think that this, I personally believe that this rezoning ordinance is, will improve the borough in many ways. The height issue, I understand why people are concerned. I absolutely, and I share some of those concerns, as well as understanding the argument on the other side, but I would really urge tonight for us to not think of this as just being about height and think about this as something that we need to pass to improve the borough. And as the previous speaker mentioned, as Shelley mentioned, if the decision is made to pass this tonight, and then the community wants to get together and rethink height and restrict it in the future, that is also a possibility. This can be amended in the future either way, and I think that that might be something worth considering moving forward. forward. And personally, I believe it would be better to pass this now and then think about that. I know one of the concerns is someone could swoop in, buy a bunch of properties, and be grandfathered in. That is absolutely a concern, I guess. It is also a concern that every day that we have the current zoning ordinance, there are buildings and people getting grandfathered in. We saw this happen over on a hearing that the zoning hearing board had to deal with this past couple months ago, and we will keep seeing this. So, again, I'm agnostic on the height issue. I, you know, think there's lots of good arguments, and I don't envy you guys, but I would still encourage us to move this process. It's been four years. There's a lot of really great work and great things that are in this ordinance, and I think that it will improve the borough if we pass it sooner rather than later, and kicking it down the road six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Good evening. Tom Pauls, 26 Highland View Lane. One of the things I want to focus on here is the fiscal impact analysis. I should have been director of planning for Frederick for three years, worked in three different states for almost 40 years in all different capacities of planning. And one of the things that we did, when I was, for example, the chief of conference of planning in Virginia Beach, had a $1.2 billion budget. It's a large city. This is not that. I get that. But what I did find as a common thread is you have a fundamental understanding of the fiscal impact that land use will have on your budget, your capital and your operating budget. There's a seminal work done called Fiscal Impact Analysis by two professors out of Rutgers, Burchell and Listigan, Robert Burchell and David Listigan. They are well-respected, and the work that they've done has shown that if there's an overabundance of residential, there's going to be a net negative effect on your budget, especially when it comes to the two big ones, which is basically schools and roads. And I understand that the way the fiscal structure here is not the same as some of the other places I've been. But the bottom line is, somebody's going to pay for it. And so, for those who are in authority, and those who have the knowledge, and those who have the background to understand that fundamental reality, it really bothers me because I don't believe, I haven't seen, and the people that I've talked to haven't seen, any kind of meaningful numbers that show the relationship between residential, office, retail, other types of non-residential, and those impacts on the infrastructure. And not only infrastructure, but also services. Police, fire, EMS, go right down the line. I would recommend that you wait. I worked for a guy who once said, he was the director of planning in one of the places I worked. He said, "Do it right, not fast. Do it right, not fast." And those words I've kept with me for decades. And another thing I think is important, that if it's cloudy in the pulpit, it's foggy in the pews. So please, let's have some clarity here, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
I'm sorry. I was here from the beginning, and you said you were only discussing what's on the agenda for tonight.
That's correct, yes.
And I don't know what's on the agenda.
Is there a specific topic you're looking to speak on?
About the budget for '26.
That's tonight, yep.
And a few others from the comments I just heard.
I'm Sarah Kip. I live at 126 Baltimore Street. I hadn't actually looked closely at the agenda before tonight, and I'm not going to speak about the zoning ordinance because I think you all know my opinion as a member of the planning commission. But I did notice that it looks like you are appointing someone to the police department named Catherine Messessi, and I'm going to make some assumptions about her gender. So I just wanted to commend you on finding a candidate for the police department. And I've spoken in the past about an effort by the borough that I think was desired to increase diversity in the police department. So I wanted to thank you for whatever you did to attract different candidates and to consider them and hopefully now appoint them tonight to that agency. And I hope you're also considering what it might mean to be a minority person in a department like that, what kinds of accommodations and considerations the borough might adopt, and thinking about what kind of support that person might need in that position to try to make that person stay and want to be a resident and a long-term member of the borough. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Michael Rife. I have a single family residence on East Middle Street, down by the old Colt farmhouse. I retired here about five and a half years ago.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer, please? Thank you.
And I looked at your '26 budget, which you posted online, and I saw a number of things, but first of all, you're increasing property taxes by 4.6%. Is that correct? Proposed?
I don't know the percentage. I know the millage.
Who are you looking at?
I'm looking at the manager, yeah.
Okay, 4.6% property tax increase?
I haven't done the math on the percentages.
Really? Because it's in your budget.
We too generally discuss it in terms of millage, so we don't think of it in terms of percentage. We'd have to figure that out.
It's really expensive for property taxes. We don't know that.
Sure.
This is my escrow statement for 2025. Property tax and borough tax, $5,340 a year. That's going up 4.6% for property, and borough tax is going up, too, right? Your budget says a cumulative increase of 8.28% in taxes here, right? You should know this. You put it online.
Again, we usually don't discuss it in percentages, so we would have to do some math on that. We usually discuss it in millage.
What's Gettysburg report? 4.17 mills?
That sounds about where we're at, yeah.
Is that the highest in Adams County?
Typically, we are, yes.
Okay, so now '26 is going to be even more than $5,340 a year for me, just a privilege of owning a house in the borough. I assume all of you pay property taxes in the borough. Is that correct? Yes, everyone? Okay. Now, this is going way up, of course, but, I mean, an 8.28% tax increase, just to live in the borough and own a house. A lot of people don't pay taxes here at all. I'm financed in public schools. Of course, I don't have any kids going there. But it's good to educate your citizens, right? But there's a point where you go from onerous taxation, which is '25, what I just told you I paid, now it's going to be even more for '26, and now you're moving into oppressive taxation. And it's something you have to avoid, right? You can't just, you say you want a process that will work year after year, but you can't just keep increasing property taxes year after year. Because you're going to want to live in the borough. You're forcing people out of the borough. So I don't know if your budget is finalized. You voting on that tonight?
We are voting on the budget tonight, yes.
So there's no change that's going to be made to that?
That's correct, sir.
So in the future, are you going to increase taxes every year? Because inflation's going to keep going, right? So you don't have anything to say about maybe reducing taxes?
I'm sorry. So typically, we would not have a back and forth during public comment. We're here to receive your messages.
That's all right. And I just want to put it out in public, and I want it on the record that we're moving into oppressive taxation here. And I don't want to pay for everyone else who doesn't pay taxes here, right? Okay, thank you.
We're going to cover a little bit more of that tonight as we get into our deliberation, I promise. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you, folks. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda here. So we start tonight with the subject of the hour, which is, of course, the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to start with a lengthy statement. I apologize. It is lengthy, but I do think that there have been a lot of really important questions tonight, and I'm hoping that this statement will answer a lot of your concerns. A little bit of this is history. A little bit of this is the process, so you understand what the borough has done over the last near four years. And some of this will be, part of this statement will be my personal experience as well. When I'm done, council members will feel, can feel free to make a statement if they like.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Do we need to make the motion for a speech before we...
We can do it that way if you'd like.
Sure.
All right, we can start with the motion. Would anybody care to make the motion on zoning?
I'll make a motion to enact proposed ordinance number 1498-25, providing a comprehensive amendment of Chapter 27 zoning of the code of ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg and the Borough of Gettysburg zoning code to include a comprehensive amendment to the zoning map of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All right, so, again, forgive me, this goes a little long, but I think it's important to get a lot of this out there. "In 2022, council was advised by our previous planning director that it was time for us to consider the review and replacement of our zoning ordinance. Such ordinance, which is expansive and covers the property rights and land management of folks in the borough, over time will be amended as the needs of the borough change, and this ordinance dating back to 2008 had been amended and amended many times. With such expansive ordinance, the probability of creating textual conflicts within it increases over time with each amendment. For example, currently, we have one zone that is designated R2 residential, but it has several overlays on top of the base zone. These overlays can and do have conflicting rules, and for the property owner or prospective property owner, it can be difficult to navigate those rules. The planning director at the time advised us that we were perhaps overdue for rewriting it. She also further suggested that as a planning and zoning document has significant overlap with county, state, and federal guidance, rather than attempting to write this ourselves, we should contract the services of a professional firm to help us write a contemporary zoning ordinance. We included in the 2023 budget funds to do just that, and we contracted the services of a nationally recognized civil engineering firm, Michael Baker International, and paid that firm approximately $40,000 to spearhead this process for us. In early 2023, a working group made up of folks from the business and nonprofit sectors, two members of the planning commission, a member of HARB, county planners, staff from the borough, a council representative, myself, we started meeting monthly with Mr. Troy Truax from Michael Baker International. He would seek our guidance and input on matters crucial to the lived experience of people on the ground, and his firm oversaw the mechanics and the compliance parts that laypeople or amateurs would need help with. The two members of Gettysburg's planning commission were involved every step of the way. They were free to report back to the full commission, the status of the draft, and to provide whatever feedback to the working group they saw fit. The overwhelming sentiment of everyone involved was a concentration on preserving residential uses and preventing commercial encroachment into traditionally residential areas. We went through multiple iterations of the map and of the use tables. Particular attention was paid to trying to preserve existing allowed uses. Once the working group's task was complete, and again, that took almost a year, and a draft was ready, it was sent to the planning commission. Then-Vice President Butterfield and I met with the chair of the commission, and we asked that the commission spend three to four months reviewing the draft and making their recommendations to council. Gettysburg has a structure that is unique in this county and rare in the state, where the planning commission has final approval on applications made to the borough for land use. Regardless, it falls to council to create the ordinance and then delegate its enforcement to our staff. The planning commission spent a full year reviewing the text with, I believe, 14 meetings, including special town halls, where they heard extensive public comment and had considerable discussion as to the particulars of the text as they would return it to council. Members of the public decided to raise funds for the televising of these meetings, and over the course of the year, two subjects dominated the majority of the discussion. The definition of family as a means to control the behavior of young people in housing in the vicinity of the college, and the expansion of the existing redevelopment district that contains the Gettysburg station development across Carlyle Street to encourage better use of some underutilized parcels in the downtown core. This had been a specific instruction of council to the working group. The intentional rehabilitation and revitalization of downtown Gettysburg has been ongoing since the late '80s and has helped turn our old town district into not just a revitalized business district, but also a destination for our tourists and visitors beyond the confines of Steinware Avenue and the National Park. This project continues in many facets, including the ambitious $19 million Baltimore Street/Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project that will aspire to connect these two vital commerce districts while improving and replacing infrastructure that in many places is a century old or more and has either failed or failing. This intent, the revitalization of our downtown, is ongoing. As we continue to look to the future of this borough, we must look to areas that have been identified by the borough, the county, the state, and by our nongovernmental agency partners that see to the needs of the people living and working in this community. These needs have routinely, and for decades, have been identified as more housing, more commercial opportunity in appropriate areas, and the growth of our tax base in the face of economic and demographic headwinds that do not bode well for our small town. Over the course of the year that the planning commission spent working on their draft, they worked very hard to do something that I think might be impossible, to meet the needs of everyone. They heard and responded to extensive public comment. They aligned our existing family definition with federal guidance from the Fair Housing Act. They tried very hard to preserve residential rights and uses without being discriminatory or overreaching, and yes, they declined to extend the revitalization district across Carlyle Street, and they even opted to roll back the existing rules that allow for increased height in the current revitalization district. This was a change that was made, in my understanding, in spite of advice to not do so from both our planning director and the commissioner's solicitor. After a year, as it did not seem that they would be completing their work directly, council set a deadline for completion and instructed the commission to send us a draft for review. Over the summer of this year, council members were tasked with a big job, too, to read all three documents, the existing ordinance, the working group's draft, and the planning commission's draft. This is three 200-page documents, side by side, and start formulating our thoughts as to what we would like to see in the final ordinance. We began our deliberations in the late summer, and I set a timeline for a vote within this calendar year, as this is one of our legislative priorities for this council, and this council effectively dissolves at the first of the year. Please remember that at this point today, we are almost four years and approximately $45,000 to $55,000 of the taxpayers' money in on a project that council had originally set to take 18 months. My predecessor, Wes Hyzer, once said that Gettysburg is a borough that tends to get things done, and my goal this year has been to complete this project that we began discussing in the summer of 2022. I'm just going to pause there and say, I don't believe this has been rushed, folks. If anything, it's overdue. At the beginning of this summer, there was often voiced criticism that council would not take seriously the input of the planning commission. There were things in the commission's draft that I flatly and frankly do not understand, or I might think they're weird or wrong. For instance, the expansion of commercial uses into the NC3 and newly created NC4 district. I had in my pocket a list of things that I personally would want to roll back, but I waited to see input from my colleagues to see if those topics would open up for discussion, and as they didn't come up, I didn't raise them. We spent considerable time on three subjects: the encroachment of commercial uses into residential areas, the family definition, and the revitalization district. Our decisions on these were not all unanimous. The revitalization district in particular was not unanimous, but we did reach a majority consensus and went ahead with our changes. For the most part, the draft that the planning commission submitted is what's being voted on here, with exceptions being centered around the revitalization district. I want to speak to why, why this is important. You ready with the map over there? I get to play with a laser here. About a decade ago, the borough entered into a comprehensive plan with Cumberland and Strabane Townships, along with the county. With the county's assistance, the expressed goals of increased housing, tax revenue, population density, and commercial opportunity were planned out and agreed to. The map called for primary development in these regions, these gray regions. And then it also called for secondary development up here. up here and down here. This is the area that we now call Amblebrook. A drive through these regions in Strabane and Cumberland today will yield the realization that in these areas, the townships, the county, and the school district have realized some fairly astounding successes in building this needed housing and growing their tax bases. There are thousands of homes coming online within five to 10 minutes of the borough. And most, if not all, of these people will drive through or visit the borough daily. Yet, the borough will not see a penny in tax revenue to pay for the services we must provide to the resident and visitor alike. In the same 10 years, how much new housing have we realized inside the borough? It's none. In fact, we have lost housing. We have lost taxable parcels to nonprofits through donation to the Federal Park. We have lost housing to vacation short-stay providers and app-based hoteling. We have multiple businesses downtown with units above them that have not been rented out. Housing has been bought out by out-of-state venture capital companies, which have opted to either not maintain those parcels or have left them vacant. Between the 2010 and 2020 census, we have seen our population drop. Our tax base is not growing, it is shrinking. Yet, our costs continue to rise. In the six years that I've been on council, our budget has gone from $5 million in 2019 to $7.5 million next year. Why? We aren't growing the government. With the exception of new police positions, we aren't growing our staff. Everything just costs more, like our health insurance costs more every year. Our costs rise, and the quantity of people we have to pay those bills is in decline. The state of Pennsylvania is estimating that by 2034, we will start to see an additional 12% decline in our population in Adams County as older generations pass on, and younger generations are not having babies at rates that could replace them. This is not a recipe for success. We must start addressing this now before it becomes a calamity. Opponents of this revitalization have used some intense language to express their concerns. One I hear a lot is destruction. It is as though there is a line of bulldozers at the borough boundary idling their engines and waiting to run over our houses and monuments, eager to come in here and build mid-rise developments. And I don't say that to be mocking or dismissive of folks deeply held beliefs, but to point out that this is the level of discourse we have received. And in the face of that, yes, the actions of anyone who would support this revitalization must look evil or motivated by some nefarious intent. There is no nefarious intent. There have been no secret meetings. There is no line of developers waiting to get in here. There are, however, a bunch of bulldozers parked right on the borough line. They are there building the needed housing, but they're doing it in Strabane and Cumberland Townships. One development is so close to the borough boundary that a portion of the parcel actually crosses the line and did have to go before our Planning Commission. But we won't see any tax revenue from that sliver of grass. The folks in the development, for all intents and purposes, will believe themselves to be Gettysburg residents, and they will depend on the fire and police and first-response services that we pay for. Their runoff will affect our drinking water, but they aren't subject to our stormwater management. We are willfully abandoning income and revenue to the surrounding townships while still increasing the economic pressures on the borough. It's time that we started to realize the needs of this community. It is time that we started helping the development of affordable, walkable housing for the folks who staff our restaurants, shops, bars, and the college. We must stop losing people to Hanover and Frederick and Mechanicsburg, creating commuters who work here and live elsewhere because they can't find housing. We must grow our population and our tax base. And the time to start that work was 10 years ago. We are behind. To do this, council now will vote on a vision of revitalization for a very small section of our town and to encourage development. This vision isn't tearing into farmland or residential areas. It is in the downtown core, right where any and every professional, private, and governmental planner would tell you, you should be doing it. This added height above 48 feet is not a given right in this newly expanded zone. Developers would have to earn added height by investing in things that this community desperately needs to help fund, like sidewalk replacement, Stevens-run channel walls, underground parking to get cars off our streets, LEED-certified buildings, things that matter to us. Added building height is the carrot we can use to get developers here. For those of you who believe 48 feet is enough to encourage developers, I'm going to ask you, and again, I don't mean to sound cheeky, but where are they? What 48-foot structures have been built in the last 10 years of the comprehensive plan? 10 and 15 years ago, before construction costs began ballooning to where they are today, the borough, and this is way before my time, asked developers how to incentivize growth, and they told us that they need height to make their projects profitable. Criticism at a time like this of your government is perhaps natural and perhaps healthy. Skepticism of it may also, in some cases, be natural and healthy. In fact, one of council's primary jobs is to be critical and skeptical of our staff's work, to ask questions and to always expect better. Over the last several months, that criticism, often anonymous and often directed not at the process but at our persons, has escalated. Manager Gable and I are easy targets because we are in roles that require us to speak to the borough's position, popular or not, as they may be. This comes with the job, and it's true that one must have a thick skin. Sometimes these criticisms are not fair, though. Sometimes they're not unfounded, or they rely on emotional accusations to get people's blood up. I'm going to say it again, there's no secret agenda. No one wants to erase our history. While members of the Planning Commission and I might disagree on philosophical applications of policy or directions that we would like to see the borough go, I don't believe that any of them have acted inappropriately, as has been alleged. I will state again that there are no secret meetings. If there were, then in six years, I have not been invited, which is really hurtful. Significant effort was spent in this last year to tie the issue of height to the recent mayoral election. This was, in my opinion, misguided as the mayor's office doesn't write the ordinance, the council does. One member recently, again, reiterated his frequent plea for more community input in response to this issue, and we did hear that echoed here in this room tonight. And while it is true that dozens of people have engaged with council and the Planning Commission through public comment, it's been nowhere near and close to the number of people that live here. There's about 7,000 people we haven't heard from. Truly, the closest we have come to hearing from the whole of the population on this matter was this most recent mayoral campaign. And if the issue of the day was building height, then building height won by 10%. At our October 27 hearing on this matter, most people who spoke here were opposed to the added height, and a couple supported it. I will tell you that in my walking around town, people come into my job all day. They talk to me about borough issues every day of my life, and I am counting about five to one in favor. That's just what I get from people I talk to. 10 minutes after that hearing, council spent two hours at a budget workshop trying to figure out how we are going to plug a $300,000 hole in next year's budget. We only have three primary revenue sources: property tax, parking fees, and the occupational tax. That's it. I know a lot of people think that we can come up with clever ideas for other ways to raise revenue, but that's it. Those are the three tools the state has given us. So we are left, when we have holes in the budget like that, we are left with the choice of either cutting services, cutting personnel, which is the same as cutting services, or raising taxes. Of the 95 people who came to the hearing on October 27 to tell us not to pursue added height and revenue, only six stayed for that budget discussion. Friends, we only have one hammer in our toolbox at budget season, and it's property tax. We work hard every year to keep those increases low as we have all been keenly and personally affected by the economics of the post-COVID era. Look at your council. We are all working-class people: teachers, arts professionals, public servants. We feel these tax increases viscerally. We must create a deeper pool of people contributing to these critical services this government provides. I know my vote here tonight will not be popular, but I will tell all of you here and watching at home that I believe in my bones it is crucial. At this point, I would like to hand the floor over to my colleagues for any statements they would like to make before we take a vote.
I've stated my position a number of times in previous meetings, so I'm not going to rehash all my points. I'll give a brief summary of some of my opposition to this. Gettysburg's historic character is central to its identity and economy. Raising the building height limit to 72 feet would disrupt the town's traditional skyline, weaken the historic atmosphere that attracts millions of visitors, and risk damaging its tourism-driven economy. The town's infrastructure, water pressure, fire response capability, traffic systems, is not designed for mid-rise buildings and would require costly upgrades. Approving a higher limit also sets a long-term precedent for denser development, gradually eroding the protections meant to preserve Gettysburg's character. Maintaining the current height cap supports a walkable, human-scale environment that residents value and that keeps the community livable and historically authentic. I have some other issues as far as the definition of family goes. I think, and thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work on this. But at this point, I would rather push this back and hopefully make some more improvements before we bring or codify this. So I will be voting nay on this issue.
Thank you, Peter. Patty?
I'm going to wait a second.
Okay. Ella?
I just wanted to say, if people don't know me, I'm a representative from the college, like a student, junior borough council member. So I'm not voting, but I do come from West Chester Borough, about two hours from here. So we went through a similar situation in terms of height, and the height was raised, and everything was fine. I think it helped our... It helped the government get income. My brother, I also remember at the public hearing, somebody talked about State College Borough. I've also been to State College, just where my brother went to school. I don't feel that the height takes away from experiencing it. I also, being on the college, I know we have buildings that are, I think, Glatfelter Hall is like 100 feet, maybe 130 feet. I still think it feels like a historical place to be. While historical value is very important and why it is, why a lot of people come here, it's not going to pay the bills. And I think that's what President Moon adequately said or elegantly said, and I think that needs to be the number-one issue today.
Council members?
In a lot of my conversations, I've heard the term lame duck council, which I think is disrespectful. A lame duck is a duck that's put its time in. It's been there, it's walked all the duck miles, so to speak. It knows the insides and outs of this issue. So to say like, okay, we don't want a lame duck session to handle this, you're going to leave it to ducklings. Me, whoever replaces Mr. Carr, whoever replaces Ms. Lawson, ducklings. We haven't studied this for four, six, eight years or so. So I think, in that regard, the term lame duck is, in my opinion, disrespectful. What Mr. Glass said, there's more to this than just the building height. There's a lot of people in this town would be affected that aren't fraternities, that have a home that doesn't meet the traditional four-person nonrelated. And I think that those protections that are in this zoning ordinance, as written, would protect them. And also, I'm new to this town within the last 2000, since 2009, so I certainly don't have any relatives that fought on Culp's Hill or anything like that. But this was Gettysburg Hotel for a decade. Nobody would do anything with it until they allowed them to go to 72 feet. And that building looks like it's always been there. I don't get imposed walking around that building. But so they added like two, three stories to it, and now it's a viable, successful building in this town. So I think that, again, nobody's beaten down the door to put in high rises, and if they are, they have to go through all kinds of hoops: HARB, zoning, planning committees, et cetera. So I think that the... We want to... I personally want to move forward with this zoning ordinance after hearing all the input from a lot of different people. I'm ready to move forward with it.
Mr. Berger?
Gettysburg's a special place. And when we had the station project back in 2018, that was a very tough decision. It was contentious, it was controversial. And when it went through, I figured that was a one-and-done because that was the spot in town that could accommodate 72 feet. It's kind of, it rises down. And I thought, okay, that's it. Looking back, now that I see, maybe I was naive to think that was it because it opened up the possibility that it would expand in other places, and that's exactly what it did. And back then, I thought, this is the only place I would support added height and expanding across Carlisle Street. I just don't see it. There hasn't been a cost-benefit analysis. There's not enough evidence for me to forever change the skyline of Gettysburg. And being a history teacher and knowing, as Tyler Cole said, hallowed ground, and people come here for that reason, I think it would affect our tourism industry. And as Mr. Strauss talked about development, we can do smart development. And as Mr. Strauss talked about development, we can do smart development. It doesn't have to be height. So it's a shame that I'm gonna vote against this, this comprehensive zoning because so much work went into it and a lot of great work. Planning Commission did a great job. The public, it's amazing that we have a great community, and I appreciate everybody's input. And when we work together, I think we can do great things. And I do think that council hasn't, I don't want to put adjectives, but I don't think we really listened well enough, and I don't think we did enough homework on the height. And I don't see the hurt of pushing it off a little bit. I'm gonna vote against it just because, I can't put my name to it, in good conscience, I cannot vote for added height in another zone before we even know what the station project's gonna, gonna bring us. What if the station project tanks, and what if it's terrible? And we learn our lesson that way. And I might not be on council at that point, and we're, we're making problems for other councils to solve. So it's a tough decision for me, but I'm gonna be voting against it. And I hope the council considers maybe thinking about holding off and talking about it some more next year.
I apologize, I apologize for the length of this. As many have heard me say, Gettysburg is a town indeed based on history, yes, but it is also so much more and will continue to become so much more into the future generations. My statements here tonight will lose friends. I have already lost friends by, when I was elected to council, because I did not vote in a way that they thought I should have voted. But I am a person that believes in their heart and their gut, and I believe in the future of Gettysburg. Preserving a historic town requires more than preserving buildings. It also requires preserving its balance. Historic towns die one of three ways. They refuse all-new development and become empty museums. They allow sprawl and lose their soul in parking lots. Or they find a middle way and stay human. Gettysburg deserves the middle way. A few taller buildings in carefully chosen places is not an attack on history. It is a pressure valve, releases the strain that otherwise pushes people out, pushes businesses out, and pushes development into other areas, sometimes out of our borough, but sometimes possibly in farmland that is also historic and also sacred ground. These hypothetical 72-foot-tall buildings along these few parcels, few streets that we're, that we're talking about, will not impact the views of the battlefield. The National Park Service's retelling of how the battle unfolded will not have to be changed with the construction of new buildings downtown. They will still tell the story of the Battle of Gettysburg. There are already structures that are out of place. Look at the 1863 Inn. Look at the Blue Water Tower on Cemetery Hill. To be completely accurate, any building, or even group, groups of trees for that matter, that weren't here in July of 1863 will be a different view of the battlefield, depending upon where you stand and where you look. History doesn't stay alive because the buildings look the same. It stays alive because the town still matters. People come to Gettysburg because of what happened here, absolutely, but they will continue to remember Gettysburg because when they were here, it feels real. It has a heartbeat. It is a town where people live and work. It is not a frozen diorama. If Gettysburg becomes a place where nothing can change, it becomes a place where nothing can grow, and places that stop growing stop mattering. These new buildings that may or may not come, and frankly, I don't think we'll see anything breaking ground for another decade, and if a new council comes in and wants to change it, they can. But a lack of new life or potential for new life can erase the reason to care about a town. On the heels of Lincoln and Thaddeus Stevens, Gettysburg has really only just scratched the surface on what people fought and died here for, to preserve the United States, to make more equality, to learn from mistakes of our own brothers that took up arms against the Union and tried to start another country. And it made us all find the better angels of our nature and encourage more togetherness. I encourage everyone, everyone in this room and everyone listening at home, let us pause, breathe, and find the better angels of our nature now, because we will not always agree. You've heard me say it before. But we are a small community, and we must listen to each other, and however the vote goes, move forward. We are not a museum. We are a living, breathing town, and we've got to grow. Thank you.
All right. I'll go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. I do appreciate it. I want to begin by acknowledging how deeply all of us care about our downtown, its character, its history, and the beauty of the views that we all cherish. I understand that for some residents and business owners, the proposal raises concerns about the view shed, the character of our downtown, and what these changes might mean for our overall quality of life. The concerns of late come from a place of pride in our community, and I respect and appreciate that. However, some people have suggested that the council await the arrival of new members before taking a vote on the motion to enact the proposal, the proposed zoning ordinance during this lame duck session. But I don't think it would be fair to our council member who has served throughout this time. It is our duty to continue the work that we have been elected to do, including this review, which has been part of the legislative agenda for two years. Counter to what has been surmised by some, the review and revisions of the zoning ordinance has not been rushed or taken lightly by any of us here on council. It's insulting when some members of the public claim that members of council are, quote, "drinking the Kool-Aid" as though we do not contemplate before we make a decision. Certainly, I'm not a subject matter expert, and I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I do have confidence in the process and all the people who have worked on the zoning ordinance and brought changes forward over the past few years. There has been a significant amount of time and energy spent evaluating the changes, looking at best practices, gathering community input, and considering the long-term plan for the downtown core. This work has been deliberate, transparent, involving many members of the community and rooted in what is believed will serve our future. In 2019, the Steering Committee of the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan provided policy guidance that suggested our focus should be on, quote, "accommodating the bulk of the region's future population growth and economic activities, economic activities at densities higher than rural settings," end quote, and that, quote, "economic development should be directed to the downtown core." It contends that the efforts to increase density must be, quote, "consistent with the cultural and historic integrity of the downtown core." Given that there is a historic building taller than 48 feet in the downtown core, it seems that the increased height allowances in the revitalization district, as recommended in the zoning ordinance, is not only consistent with the cultural and historic integrity, but also aligns with the overall goals of the region when viewed objectively. I'd like to make clear that adopting new standards within the zoning ordinance does not mean that we are disregarding Gettysburg's unique history. The planning and conversation has been thoughtful and considerate, ensuring that history continues to have a meaningful place in our downtown core. For over two centuries, smart planning has allowed us to accommodate growth while still protecting the qualities that make Gettysburg special. Finally, I have lived and worked here, in Gettysburg, my entire life, and have a sincere desire to see our continued preservation balanced with healthy growth. I believe it's important that we look at the proposal not just through the lens of what our community is today, but what it needs to be for future generations. Our downtown, especially given that it's an historic one, must not only be cared for, but it also must evolve. Communities that thrive over the long term do so because they balance preservation with thoughtful, strategic growth, keeping in mind the needs of the people who will one day call Gettysburg home. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone who's here this evening and has been with us for the past couple of years. We've heard a lot from residents of the, of the borough as well as business owners, and we really do appreciate hearing from everyone. I think that's been really important. I also want to thank the Planning Commission. They've worked hundreds and hundreds of hours, and my colleagues here on Borough Council. This summer, it was quite a tedious task going line by line, and everyone hung in there and did that. I don't know how much more I can add to the eloquence that some of my colleagues spoke, everyone who, we may or may not agree with one another, but I really appreciate the work that my colleagues have done here on council. And I was actually gonna start out by saying maybe I, I should be the one that starts quacking, but I'll speak English instead, so, instead of being the quack of the duck. And thank you, Mr. Mooney. I appreciated your comments. I also, I was away for part of the summer, and when I returned, I was kind of shocked to see the "save historic Gettysburg" signs that were throughout our, our town. And I, you know, looked into to see how that came about and what organization, or if it was a committee. And, and I kind of was struck by that because I, I know that all of my colleagues here, those who are gonna vote for or against this, none of us would say that we were against saving historic Gettysburg. So I, I think that was kind of a moot advertising campaign out there. But I also was struck by the scare tactics that were used by that small group, a small kind of unknown unnamed group of people who used that campaign. I saw the drawings of like 12 buildings over on the plot of land over near where the Agway plot is that the college owns. And first of all, I don't think you could put 12 skyscrapers on that plot of land. But I, I was kind of struck by the way in which those scare tactics were used to kind of frighten a lot of people who came out to be very concerned what council was gonna do and that we were gonna see this. I also was struck by things that I heard, kind of an ugly underbelly of all of this in terms of who might move into the town if we were to have these buildings. And I thought that was really shameful, and I was struck by, you know, it just seems the opposite of what Gettysburg is and how we treat one another. And I think one issue I would like to address that my colleagues haven't, because I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I think we thrive as a diverse community. And I think that means not just diverse in ways in which you think, the way you look at somebody, or somebody worships a way, or, or race, or the other categories that we talk about diversity, but also economic diversity. And I think when we have people who can't afford to live in the town, who might work in the service industries, or be a young professional working at the college or the hospital, just starting out, I think shame on us if we can't provide housing for those people. And shame on us if we don't want to live in a community that is mixed economically. And so I, I think that it is some, it is time for us to move forward. I think that, I, I am prepared to vote this evening, and I will be voting for the zoning item here that's on the agenda. And I think that, I think we also heard from a taxpayer in the borough this evening who addressed the issue of how difficult it is to see tax increases in our property tax. And as Mr. Moon said, there are three ways in which we can get revenue in a community. You know, parking is one, property tax is the other, and the occupation tax, which is pretty, just kind of a, a little kick in the bucket, really. But we heard from someone tonight who moved here not too long ago and is struggling with the idea of these taxes. We are seeing growth outside of the borough, and we're seeing people who want to come in and use the borough and use our services, and we provide a lot. We provide not just for the borough of Gettysburg, but we provide for the county in so many ways, and visitors. We have almost 4 million visitors a year. I, I grew up in Philadelphia, so I understand the idea of tall buildings, and I also understand the buildings like Constitution Hall or Independence Hall, or the Liberty Bell and things like that. So I, I am convinced that we have good stewards here that serve on council, and we also have people in the audience who will come and call us out on things and keep us honest. And so I want to just say thank you to my colleagues for the hard work that everyone has done. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody on council have a further point they'd like to make before we take a vote? Ms. Stoll, would you call the role, please? Make sure you pull your microphone closer.
Mr. Bales?
Nay.
Mr. Berger?
Nay.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Mooney?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Vote pass 5-2.
Thank you. I know at a moment like this, there's a lot of disappointment, there's a lot of dismay, there's a lot of mixed emotions in the room, and I apologize that that's the moment we all find ourselves in. These are contentious issues. There's probably very little that local government can do that's more personal than establishing rules for how you use your personal property. And I want to thank all of my peers here for a thoughtful conversation, and I do want to thank the members of the Planning Commission for the arduous task they undertook. Thank you. Would anybody care to make the next motion? Can you remind, can you remind about the date? I think you said the date. Yeah, that will be January 12th. Let's pause a moment and let folks who want to depart do so.
And if council takes that action and sets it, the public hearing for January 12th, you do not need to set a special, here, a special meeting because you will already be meeting afterwards, so that component of the motion can be.
So we would strike the phrase "special meeting"
Right.
And change the date to January 12th. Okay. Would anybody care to make that motion?
I will. A motion to set a public hearing of the Borough Council to be conducted and held on Monday, January 12th, 2026, commencing at 6:30 PM for the purposes of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the borough of Gettysburg concerning an application to be filed with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to be made by J. Depoma, 8, Incorporated, seeking approval of the proposed inter-municipal transfer of Pennsylvania liquor license number R.16082 for use in the borough at certain premises located at 29 North Washington Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, that hearing date is set and can be advertised. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore before we continue? I forgot we were in your segment of the agenda here. Did you have anything to add to your report for this evening? I'm so sorry.
Nothing to add, no.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore?
I'd just like to add that you hit the ground running immediately when you took in this position, Mr. Whitmore, and I appreciate all of the time you spent with the task group, with the Planning Commission, with council. Anytime I, I know anytime I had a question or needed some clarification, you gave it. I really appreciate you being here. We are lucky to have you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Are you pinching for HARB tonight as well? Great.
So you'll find on page four of the packet, the three items that involve motions tonight. The first one involves an emergency demolition of a rear-block garage. That was a consent agenda item. The other two involve 25 Steinware Avenue as a roof and general porch project coating, and then 9 Hanover Street being windows.
Okay, so the first, the first one is on page four, and then there's a whole bunch of advisory things, and then the two COAs are there and done at the end as well. Okay. Would anybody care to make the motion at the top of page four for?
I think there's one at the bottom of page two.
Oh my God, what is going on?
Top of page three, looks like.
Top of page four.
Oh, this was, this would be the motion to enact the proposed ordinance 1499-25.
Oh my God. It's not, it's not. Okay, there's a motion at the top of page four for ordinance number 1499-25. Would anybody care to make that?
I'll make a motion to enact proposed ordinance number 1499-25, amending Chapter 11, Part 1, Section 106, Subsection 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg, Gettysburg Historic District Ordinance for the purposes of confirming certain powers, duties, and voting procedures of the Historic Architectural Review Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Counsel will review, counsel will consider, counsel will...
So then, do we jump down to COA 250089? We're not that far.
Yes. So now we're on page five, top of page five, right?
Well, my pages are different, but is it COA-250089?
COA 250089, major project, 29 East Middle Street.
I think that's the next one, right? Yep.
Are you reading this mess correctly?
Those are the recommendations on the consent agenda.
All right. Would anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute.
That still looks like it's one of the consent agenda.
That still looks like it's under the consent agenda, so I'm not sure.
Because the motion's underneath of it, so it looks like it's there twice, but it's, yes.
What?
So, Mr. Whitmore, which?
Oh, I see, I see 89 and then nine zeros after that.
Because it looks like it's under a consent agenda, not something to be read.
And it doesn't have a motion structured around it either.
No, it doesn't have a motion structure. So the next one is COA-250090, 25 Steinware Avenue.
That's it.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. I'll make a motion to accept the Harb recommendation for COA-250090, major project, 25 Steinware Avenue, Cross Cannon Studio LLC, for the roof project to include the seal coating of the front porch and rear roof of the main structure, seal coating of the diamond-shaped metal roof on main structure, and to replace the rear garage roof with asphalt shingles as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Color coding perhaps on this, so we can read it better.
Yeah, yeah, like a set of arrows. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next COA, please.
That's the 250088, is that the one?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the Harb recommendation for COA-250088, major project, 9 Hanover Street, Go Permits LLC, for the replacement of 20 existing windows with Vitex Potamik, double-hung windows with standard sashes, which will include seven front facade windows with a two-over-two window style and grids, and 13 side and rear windows with one-over-one window style without grids, and will include half-screens on all windows, and that any grids will be simulated divided lights conditioned that the applicant can use two-over-two windows with grids for the entire project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We are hoping in the coming weeks to repair the way the Harb section of this agenda is presented, back to the way it used to be, because this is.
A mess.
Absurd.
Well, I mean, I find it, just to interject there, I find it informational, and I appreciate that portion of it. I just do think on the type setting, put several spaces between information and need to vote. It could fix it right then.
Okay. Any questions before we move on for Mr. Whitmore?
Mr. Whitmore, did we need a vote on the 29 East Middle Street?
Preferably yes, that, that one can be postponed until January to provide council with a full motion. As it was an emergency demolition, the actions already occurred. This is just the process of making it, in keeping with Chapter 11.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Because it was an emergency, for safety reasons, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have that on the January agenda.
And it'll be written as a motion.
Yes.
Great.
Cool. Like stars next to it. Okay. Parking Department, Mr. Gable.
Yes. If you recall, council authorized a pilot parking program earlier this year, I think it was March, to encourage Gettysburg Hotel or other folks who host, or could host, conferences in the generally considered slower economic times of the year. We've received communication from the Gettysburg Hotel that they are going to look for ways to utilize that pilot program this year. They're speaking with Conferies that will be coming here in, I believe it is February. So we'll see how that goes. Just wanted to update you on that, remind you that that, we're now entering that time of year after the Christmas festival where council has authorized that pilot program. Just to reiterate that, that, the daily rate for large-scale groups would be $9 a day as opposed to the $18 a day to encourage those large groups for, for coming into town. The other update I have is reference to revenue for the parking, from the parking department for the borough. Again, we are outpacing our previous years based largely on council's decision last year to essentially maximize parking rates in certain districts of the borough. So for the month of October, you can see we received $183,000 in parking revenue. That is, does not include penalties, it's just straight-up people paying at kiosks, pay-by-app, or feeding meters. That's the highest on record. You can see the previous years, 24, $159,000, 137, and 23, so, and it continues to go down as you go back to 2016. So we are considerably outpacing, if you look at the bar at the top, year-to-date numbers. So to the gentleman that was speaking about tax revenue being a burden, this is one of the streams of revenue that the borough can and does successfully employ. Unless you have questions, that concludes the parking report.
Anyone? All right, thank you. We'll move on to Public Works, Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. Just a couple of things on my report to highlight. The Public Works crew is still collecting leaves, along with events that we're playing, we are working with, we're still collecting leaves. The shade tree commission is looking to do some pruning and trimming of their shade trees this winter. Some of it will be contracted out, the larger trees, larger canopy trees that we cannot reach with our bucket truck, that will be contracted out. But the other trees, smaller trees, we will be doing some pruning and trimming to keep the trees from up against the buildings and around streetlights and traffic signals and stuff like that. So we'll be taking care of some of that this winter as well. And then special events, we just completed one special event, but we're preparing for another special event at the end of the year. So you'll see blocks out for road closures still.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
Yeah, I got one. I see the new leaf vac truck working pretty efficiently and feel it's a good investment there.
It is.
Want to speak on that a little bit?
So it has been a very good investment. We were, compared to the street sweeper, it's a one-person operation. We get around the piles a lot better with the new leaf vac because we can reach out further. And it also has a larger capacity, so we don't have to keep making trips back to our shed to empty, where the leaf vac we have now will take three of our sweeper trucks loads. So it's been a good investment.
Are you running both right now?
We are, yes. Because we were doing special events, we got a little behind the leaves, so we're trying to catch up.
Cool. All right, any other questions?
And, Mr. Harbaugh, I know it's, may seem a little early for some, but our next meeting is not till, I believe, January 5th. And some people take down their Christmas tree immediately. Do you have a date for pickup of real Christmas trees?
January 2nd.
Thank you. So we would need to know about that now.
Yes.
Thank you so much. January 2nd, pick up real trees, not fake ones.
That's right.
Make sure that all the ornaments and string lights and stencil are off your real tree.
And the stand is removed.
And the stand is removed. January 2nd.
Yes.
They just need to put it on the curb for you.
Yes, and we usually, we usually take trees all the way up till middle of February.
Got it. Thanks so much.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harbaugh? All right, now, is one of you filling in for Chad today? Or did he not have a?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay.
The, the only thing I have is actually an update on, it seems like we've been talking about Washington Street for, I don't know, ever. And when, once we thought that project was done, it is not. And here is why. As it turns out, a large portion of this project was actually subterranean, where, you know, folks that are driving on the very nice new Washington Street paved road would not realize they're traveling over top of infrastructure underground, in this case, most notably, a large storm water management pipe. Just so you can familiarize yourself, I've put up on the screen here the area of Washington Street that we're, we're speaking of. And take note of this pole. Take note of this storm drain inlet. And then this is the reverse view of that. So here is the one storm drain inlet, here is that pole, and here is another storm drain inlet. If you draw a line between this storm drain inlet and this storm drain inlet, what is in the middle of that line is a telephone pole. And this is what the inside of that new storm drain pipe looks like, with a gaping hole in the side.
That's new, right?
That is brand new. We spent the better part of $1.7 million on this project. Here is another look at the damage Met Ed did when they placed that pole into our brand-new storm drain. That is what you're looking at directly in the gaping hole, looking into the earth. This project has been completely compromised by Met Ed and their, I won't say what I'm really thinking, because I'm furious, as we all should be. Met Ed will be made aware of this, if they're not listening and watching right now, we are drafting a very formal letter to them, where they will be redoing this. We will be forming a formal complaint with the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. And our expectation here as a borough is when they completely redo this, it will be done to the standards at the surface that we are currently living with, because it's a brand-new road. We will not accept patchwork. They are going to be charged with a complete rebuild of that road from Chambersburg Street to the railroad tracks.
You say that with such confidence. I love it.
We're going to try.
Yeah.
We're going to try.
Yeah, as we should.
But the polite conversations aren't working, so we've got to start talking about this publicly.
Yep.
We've had this, this conversation with them behind, behind closed doors, and it's not working.
I did have a meeting with a representative from Met Ed to talk about this, as well as several other issues. Improperly placed poles on Fourth Street, as well as the preponderance of ghost poles throughout the borough. They have made a promise to work with us on all of these issues. They were asking for statements on damage for Washington Street. And now that we have those televised images, we're going to be able to start formulating that bill.
I have a question about, just since we're a municipality and they're a public utility, you know, agency, what legal recourse do we have? Maybe I should ask our solicitor that.
Yeah, but probably not off the cuff.
Right. Okay, I apologize. Let me know next month. No, that's, no.
And I'm sorry, Patty, because you're not going to be here next month.
I know, I know.
And we've, we've had some discussions in that regard, and knowing that we're moving in that direction, but it's, you know?
It's tricky.
Well, and note that Mr. Gable indicated that filing a complaint with the Public Utility Commission was one of the ways to move, as opposed to a private or a civil action against, against them and so forth.
Okay.
Because they are a public utility.
Right, right.
I mean, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
I have no, no more encouraging.
Okay, cool.
News from the engineer report.
Good work, buddy.
That's why Chad left, right?
That's why Chad left.
And that was months in the, I mean, that, that Washington Street project.
Oh, that was better part of a year and a half project, if you remember the inconvenience. And we had to shut the road down and go under the railroad tracks, and it was quite the, quite the project, and expensive.
Yep. All right. We will move on to the Police Department, Sergeant Evans.
Good evening. You should have a copy of my report. I really don't have much outside the report. I would like to say thank you for putting the presentations on the agenda, besides locking up bad guys and, you know, recognizing these guys and their achievements is probably the best part of my job, so I really, we really appreciate that. So, again, not much outside of my report. We had Remembered State Parade last month. Shout out to Robbie and his team again, they do excellent job, you know, putting the blocks out, taking them down. I'd like to say thank you for the, to the Pennsylvania State Police, the Adams County Sheriff's Office, and the Parks Service for all their help. They came in and provided additional support, so everything went smoothly, no issues reported to me when it came to public safety issues. So that all went well. Everything went well this past weekend, I thought. Another thing I want to bring up is, I know a young lady brought up the potential candidate that, you know, you guys are going to vote on tonight to extend the conditional offer of employment, so if you choose to do that, then we'll immediately start the background process and get that candidate set up for their psychological and their physical. But anything other than that, I mean, if you guys want to discuss anything on the report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Sergeant Evans? All right, I am rather excited that we do have somebody on our list this year. Would anybody care to make the first motion under the Police Department?
I'll make a motion to accept the eligibility list of candidates for the open position of entry-level patrol officer, as certified to and submitted to the Borough Council by the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg. The Borough Council does not object to the candidate certified to by the Civil Service Commission on its eligibility list submitted to the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll just extend my gratitude to the Civil Service Commission for continuing to do a really excellent job in helping us create these lists and testing as necessary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Anybody care to make a motion on the conditional appointment of Ms. Maisy?
I'll make a motion to make a conditional appointment of Catherine Maisy as the first-ranked candidate on the eligibility list, as certified to and submitted to the Borough Council by the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg for an open position of entry-level patrol officer with the Gettysburg Borough Police Department. Said conditional appointment of an entry-level patrol officer shall become effective on January 1st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Looking closer, it may be Masazy?
How is her last name pronounced?
I believe it's Maisy.
Maisy, okay.
But don't quote me on that, I'll probably butcher it.
All right. Hopefully she shows up.
I want to just say to Sergeant Evans, thank you so much. This is something that I know I've talked about the last eight years, and I really appreciate the efforts that you and others in the department have made, and, and certainly having her name through the Civil Service Commission. So it's exciting, and I hope for more. So someday, maybe we'll have a Spanish-speaking officer and an officer of color on the force as well. That would be ideal, so, thank you.
Yeah, definitely ideal. The problem is getting people to apply.
I realize that, yeah.
That's, that's the issue. We're only dealt with, you know, a handful of candidates, and, you know, we get what we get, unfortunately. I mean, there's definitely initiatives that we can, we can do in the future that we can work on and figure out, so.
Well, and I think, you know, steps that the council's taken earlier about helping to pay for the academy, you know, our efforts, so, and maybe we need to just be more creative in terms of recruitment of some of those groups of people. But I want, I want to thank you personally, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, let's, let's get her on board. Any questions for Sergeant Evans before we move on? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, before we do move on, for those of you who don't have a business downtown, who didn't spend time downtown this, this week, the Christmas festival that our borough staff just pulled off was pretty fantastic this year, and the heavy involvement of the Police Department in making sure that so much of that, especially Friday night, came off without a hitch, was really just top-notch, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing organizing your teams.
I mean, that's all my guys, they stepped up. They stepped up. So, you know, we can only ask them to show up, you know, when they're off, and, you know, they have stuff to do with their families, and, you know, so my guys are the ones that stepped up. So all the credit to them.
Excellent. All right. Office of the Manager and Treasurer. We'll start with Ms. Stoll.
Other than all the motions, I'll just give a shout-out to Detective Wyker, who's celebrating 18 years of service here with the Police Department.
Great. All right. And Mr. Gable.
Yeah, picking up on the Christmas festival theme, I want to definitely do a shout-out to Jill Sellers, President and CEO of Main Street Gettysburg.
322 days, right?
We're counting down already, yes. Look, folks, the Main Street organization is a staff of one and a half people, and they've just produced a $100,000 event. That's what it costs to produce the Gettysburg Christmas Festival, for those that don't know that. That is why sponsorships are vitally important downtown, because the small investment that businesses put into that are returned to them tenfold. So it's important that this community continue to... I know $100,000 sounds like a big bill, but to President Moon's point, it was busy. And if you didn't find a way to make a buck, you need to rethink your business model. Just saying.
Yeah, maybe don't give away the hot chocolate.
Right. No, it was phenomenal. And I think the partnerships with Garmin, with just tweaking the tree lighting ceremony to coordinate that with the first day of the festival, along with the Tuba Fest. The crowds were just huge on the square Friday night. And right on cue, it started snowing.
Did you order that? How much did we pay for the snow? That was great.
Yeah. It was just all-around a phenomenal event everywhere across town. And most festivals are not, you know, one and a half square miles. Most festivals are just condensed into maybe a couple city blocks. But we figured out how to make a festival affect everyone in a positive way. And so I thank you to Main Street and all of Main Street's volunteers, because it could not have been done without their efforts. And so we need to continue to make sure we invest in Main Street so we can continue to have this economic windfall for everyone in December.
That's right.
Terrible segue to Senator McCormick, but about economic windfalls. Not that he is producing one for us, but it was reported in, on November 17th, we did host Senator McCormick here in this room. It was not well advertised in advance per the senator's request. It was not on his public calendar. It was confirmed by the senator that Gettysburg was the first municipality that Senator McCormick visited as a sitting United States Senator. And that meeting largely happened because the work we're doing with Cozen O'Connor. And if you recall, the reason we're engaging Cozen O'Connor is to create the political wind sails, put the sails in the wind, wind in the sails, to get us over that hump of getting the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project funded. If you remember, we've done five rounds of the raise and one, or four rounds of the raise and one round of the build, same grant program, different administrations in Washington. So they tweak it to their preferences a little bit. Essentially the same grant funding stream. And the people that were in the room, it was deliberately a small group. It was myself, Main Street with Jill Sellers, Chad Clayball, the Borough Engineer, Mike Malawiki from the Stormwater Authority, and Mark Geis from GMA. The senator came with Ryan Almond. He's right here on the right. Ryan Almond is Senator McCormick's Chief of Staff. These two individuals are with Cozen O'Connor. We found the senator to be very engaged. He was very versed in what we're trying to do here. He asked very thoughtful questions. He asked us questions like, what was it like to apply to those previous grant rounds? What's broken in the system, and how can it be fixed? He even brought up, well, isn't this kind of the definition of insanity? You've tried five rounds and it's failed, so what's different? Our answer to that, what's different now is we're talking directly to you about it. So he was aware of our economic pressures. To the gentleman that brought up our tax revenue issue here, the senator is aware that, you know, 44% of our, of property in the borough is exempt from taxation, but he's also aware of, obviously, the impacts the Park Service brings on our small community. He himself brought up, you know, is this a project that could be funded through an earmark? Oftentimes a dirty word in Washington, and however, that's frankly how we were funded, through Congressman Joyce and the Gettysburg Welcome Center. It was an earmark in an appropriations bill. So the senator brought that up. He was very appreciative that this is not just a borough or a Main Street project, that it's a collaborative project between the borough, Main Street, Columbia Gas, GMA, and the Stormwater Authority. He gave us some homework to do in that, you know, we need to do some more... He's interested in learning a little more details about why we were maybe dinged a few points here and there in our application, so that we can get back to him, so he himself can have a more direct conversation with perhaps the Secretary Duffy. So we'll see where it leads. We know the next round for the build grant, it will come out in February. We'll reapply then, and we'll have reported back to the senator with the tasks that he gave us at that time, and we'll see where that goes. Jill, did I miss any relevant points?
No, I'll talk about them there.
So that's it. It was a great, a great meeting, and encouraged that it will reap some rewards moving forward, we hope.
Are you ready for us to tackle the motions?
Sure.
All right, folks. We've got a lot of these here, so if we can do them sort of rapid-fire, we can get through them.
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the distribution of the Eichlberger-Stahl funds to borough residents as required and recommended.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just add that that will be $300 this Christmas season.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for the purposes of setting, updating, and confirming the borough's fees and charges for the issuance of licenses, permits, and the provision of municipal services in fiscal year 2026.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the general fund in the amount of $7,516,659, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $7,516,659.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Fire Protection Services Fund in the amount of $243,434, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $243,434.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Fund in the amount of $127,240, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $256,152.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for the fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $3,266,338, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $3,555,245.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please say aye if you are in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $670,704, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $642,880.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Reserve Fund in the amount of $63,401, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $1,391,049.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Liquid Fuels Fund in the amount of $179,366, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $204,191.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Revolving Loan Fund in the amount of $9,374, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $0.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2026, containing an estimated, an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the ARPA Fund in the amount of $5,933, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $378,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This is, this ends it, then? This, right, for the ARPA?
The last of our ARPA money.
ARPA will expire in '26, yes.
In May or sometime in 2026.
September 31st is the last.
Last one. Okay. Thanks.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please.
I'll make a motion to enact Proposed Ordinance 1500-25 for the purpose of fixing the tax rates and levying the taxes of the Borough of Gettysburg for the fiscal year 2026 at 4.7702 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation for general borough purposes, 30 mils on each dollar of occupational assessed valuation for general borough purposes, and at .5000 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation for Fire Protection Services appropriations tax purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I just want to give a shout-out for not stopping your reading even for a second while that was happening. Good job.
At least it wasn't milk.
Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Nicholas Redman as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Planning Commission for a four-year term commencing in January 2026 and expiring in January 2030.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
And he is, that's a...
He is continuing his term, yes.
Yeah. So thank you very much. Continuing.
Make a motion to appoint Jenny Dumont as member of the Gettysburg Borough Planning Commission to complete the remainder of the unexpired four-year term of office of Sarah Kipp, which term shall expire in January 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Patrick Nagle as a member of the Board of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority for a five-year term commencing in January 2026 and expiring in January 2031.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Michael Burkner as a member of the Zoning Hearing Board of the Borough of Gettysburg for a five-year term commencing in January 2026, expiring in January 2031.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Brian Hodges as a member of the Gettysburg Municipal Authority for a five-year term commencing in January 2026, expiring in January 2031.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Since this is the last appointment for our authorities' boards and commissions, I just want to thank all of those who have agreed to serve and those who are renewing. I also want to just put a PSA out there for the community. We have about 60 volunteers that serve on our authorities' boards and commissions, and they perform an important service to the community in terms of those volunteer agencies. And so if you are interested in getting involved in government, local government, it's a great way to get your foot in the door. And I encourage you to complete the ABC form that's on the website. We're gonna have a new website at some point. It'll be more visible to folks. And I just want to give that PSA out there to get people to continue to think about volunteering, so.
And I think that application is on the homepage, is the big red button, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
It's gonna get a little more visibility.
It's not. It should be.
Yeah, it's a little hidden right now.
But thank you for those that have applied and continually have, allow us to keep their applications on file to, if they don't get appointed on the first time, to keep their applications on file and reach out to them to see if they would serve.
The easiest way to find that application currently is when you go to the website, go to the search bar and type the word volunteer. It should be the first result you get.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And I think that was the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. A motion to set the Borough Council's legislative agenda for 2026 to include the following: PBS 2016-12 Sidewalk Ordinance Revisions; Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance SALDO; PBS 2022-04 Historic District Replacement Materials Revisions, including the Design Guide and the Harb Ordinance.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
All right. Any discussion on that? Is anybody, is everybody okay with those being our legislative priorities for next year? Is there anything else you'd like to see on that list that you think is more pertinent or time-sensitive? or time-sensitive?
I think we talked about them at the last workshop meeting, and we've seen them as they've been, I hate to say the word "tabled," but they have been there, lingering of things that we need to do. But we had a very large list of things that we needed to accomplish over the last two years for sure, but longer. And we've accomplished a great many of them. And I applaud President Moon for his guidance in that, and all of my colleagues for accomplishing that. But I think that these are good items for immediately on the agenda for the legislation, legislative agenda for the, for the new council and beginning in 2026. And I look forward to that discussion.
And we can add to that list, and we will add to that list as things develop organically. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Next motion, please.
I make a motion to set the organization meeting of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg to be conducted on Monday, January 5th, 2026, commencing at 5:00 PM to authorize the provision of public notice for the organization meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. See you all in January.
I'll make a motion to set monthly general business meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2026 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates and authorize the provision of public notice for the general business meetings: Monday, January 12th, 2026; Monday, February 9th, 2026; Monday, March 9th, 2026; Monday, April 13th, 2026; Monday, May 11th, 2026; Monday, June 8th, 2026; Monday, July 6th, 2026; Monday, August 10th, 2026; Monday, September 14th, 2026; Tuesday, October 13th, 2026; Monday, November 9th, 2026; and Monday, December 14th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody noticing anything weird about any of those, like maybe you were on a holiday or anything? We may have to.
That's why the one is a Tuesday.
Yeah, I know. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We have our business meeting schedule, and now some workshops.
I'll make a motion to set monthly work session meetings of the Borough Council for the fiscal year 2025 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates and to authorize the provision of public notice for the work session meetings.
It should be 2026.
Okay. Let me just restate that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to set monthly work session meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2026 commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates and to authorize the provision of public notice for the work session meetings: Monday, January 26th, 2026; Monday, February 23rd, 2026; Monday, March 23rd, 2026; Monday, April 27th, 2026; Tuesday, May 26th, 2026; Monday, June 22nd, 2026; Monday, July 27th, 2026; Monday, August 24th, 2026; Monday, September 28th, 2026; Monday, October 26th, 2026; and November 23rd, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have workshop dates and then budget workshop.
I'll make a motion to set the fiscal year 2027 budget work session meetings of the Borough Council commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates and to authorize the provision of public notice for the budget work session meetings: Monday, October 26th, 2026; Tuesday, October 27th, 2026; Monday, November 2nd, 2026; and Tuesday, November 3rd, 2026, if needed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to, this is, this budget workshop calendar is slightly different than years past. You notice they are in a Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday configuration where before they used to be Mondays right after the October business meeting. The reason I'm suggesting the tweak this year is because the week after the October business meeting is the ICMA National Conference, which I plan to attend. I will not be present.
Got it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, we'll move on to liaison reports here, and we'll start with Jill Sellers with Main Street Gettysburg. Before we get into that, though, the savvy observer will notice, we actually have several places where we have open seats for some of these affiliate organizations. And my intent is that, once we have seated new members in January and are fully organized, we will probably at our workshop in January have a discussion as to whether any of those activities and meeting times are ringing anybody's bell. So, I didn't want you to think we were ignoring those. I just think it's more prudent to wait till we have a full new council. Ms. Sellers?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Happy birthday.
Aw, thank you.
Oh, what?
Thank you. Okay, I'll make it brief. First, on zoning, thank you. I won't go any further, but thank you. Baltimore Street Project, yes, we did meet with Senator McCormick. He was engaging and certainly well-informed when he arrived. It was a very encouraging meeting. We talked about the Gateway Connectivity Project, but he was also very interested in America 250 PA events that are coming to us in 2026. So, we're going to have further discussions with, with the senator, which was great. The Borough revenue question, I continue to have meetings and look into options. I understand the restrictions that the state imposes on municipalities, but there's got to be a better way to skin this cat. So, I just want you to know that that's not falling off of my plate. I just continue to try to find, so I'm meeting with state legislators as well as federal officials. We're surrounded, as you know, by federal property. We have 4 million visitors that come here because there's federal property here. There has to be new ways to, to look at, supporting the public services that happen in a place like Gettysburg, which is, which is unique in its own right. But there, I know that there's solutions out there, and Main Street is looking for those. The Gettysburg Welcome Center, so authority to use the grant funds was signed on December 4th, yay. So, now we have to complete an action, action plan, which we've been doing for years, but now it has to be codified in a different way in order to submit it to the feds. We'll get that done as well. We're also meeting this month with the awarded contractors. So, we are moving along, and so stay tuned. I really, really hope we will be breaking ground. I guess it's probably looking like January, if the ground's not frozen. We'll see how that goes. Okay. Big reveal is this Friday for the Adams County, Adams County Community Foundation's Giving Spree, so fingers crossed for all the support. It was a record year, if you followed the Giving Spree, over $4 million. This is an amazing generous community, and I'm just very hopeful on behalf of Main Street so that we can continue to do the work that we do, that I absolutely love to do. Steinware Business Improvement District continues, you know, to, to serve that area. There were things out and about for the Christmas Festival that hadn't been there before, and we have our annual meeting scheduled with them this Thursday afternoon. All bid businesses are encouraged to attend. So, 4:30 on Thursday at the Reliance Mine Saloon, free pizza, and come hang out and find out all the things that the bid does for your business on Steinware Avenue. And finally, the Christmas Festival. Thank you for all your kind words and compliments. I need to shout out this entire community, our partners, the things that we did this year that were different, that really created new challenges but new opportunities. I can't say enough, working with Gettysburg Railway, working with Garmah, working with Ben Jones and the Brass Band on the Tubafest, working with Horse Tours of Gettysburg to have Santa Claus brought in on the carriage, lots of good things that happened, you know, the magic of Christmas snow and the festival moon on Thursday night. Yeah, we did all that. Shout out to the sponsors that, you know, we can't do this without, cannot do this without volunteers. We don't have enough of them. I could speak forever on the decline of volunteerism across the nation, but the volunteers we had are phenomenal. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and my aching muscles for coming out and doing what you did. But, you know, that's how this all comes together. It's really a community effort, and I'm very thankful for that. And I can't give my heartfelt thanks enough to the Borough staff, to the manager who worked all weekend, to Public Works Robbie, and the guys who do far more than their job descriptions include. And I just, I don't have enough. I would give bonuses to all of them if I could. And the Police Department for keeping law and order, for being engaged with the community. I just absolutely loved finding two officers on the circle taking family pictures with, in front of the Christmas tree. That is a sense of community service and, and love for where they live and work. I think that's fantastic. And for saving me with the jump pack twice as I was stranded downtown. So, I can't say enough about how, how we were supported in order to pull this event off. So, I appreciate all that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thanks for all you do for me.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good work. Mr. Carr-Gera?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Mr. Berger?
On the sewer side for GMA, the Interceptor Project's about 99% complete. Talked to Mark Geis today. Still working on a section of pipe on Buford. They're still working on the Tiber Wall. Bream Alley pouring concrete. They're going to be putting in the guardrails there soon. There's still some cleanup and paving to do. That will take probably to the spring, but everything should be cleaned up by then. On the water side, the Andrews Well, we're utilizing a hydrologist to help us through the outstanding concerns with DEP, with the permitting process. And, you know, talking with Mark today, just bringing up what I think Charles alluded to earlier about how we collaborate with our utilities, with, with the Borough and the Stormwater and Columbia Gas, and it's just, just a real. Just really appreciate how we all work together. I like what he said. We maximize efforts and minimize expenses. That's kind of a good way to think about it. So, want to keep up that collaboration, and it's a great team effort. So, thank you.
All right. Anything from Akba?
Next meeting is on January. They're rearranging Akba because Ron Harris was stuck more or less for 20 years heading Akba. Nina Tippler's taking it over. They're rearranging who's going to be members and things like that. I won't be here. It'll be Chad. So, Chad, I don't know if they're going to contact you. Okay? Yeah. So.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
COG, anything? Do we have anything from COG, Sarah? Okay. Happy?
Happy is looking for more volunteers on the board. My colleague, Mr. Berger, is joining Happy. I'm pleased to hear. And the chair of Happy is Sarah Kipp, who you heard from this evening, and she is leaving the area, actually moving out of state, so they're looking for a new chair as well.
That's going to be an amazing intersection with your trail feasibility study work.
It's the same, Dennis Hickethere's the same liaison there, so. And we just talked, and he asked me to, to be a part of it. And I said, I think that my people on council think I'm a slacker with the, and he's like, no, 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 no. It's, it's the park service. So, you can ask him about that. But, yeah.
Also, if I may add one other thing, Sarah and I are talking to Charles Strauss that would go to you, Chad, about what they're going to do with Sarah Kipp, give her a proclamation or whatever. Because Sarah, you've been going backwards and forth with Charles about how this should be handled, because she hasn't been, well, you can say it. I'm not going to talk for you.
Well, Charles Strauss asked for a proclamation, so maybe do that in January. We'll just have to mail it to, we'll have to get, yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right. We have our EMS and fire reports in our folders. So, this is going to take us to elected officials' comments. And I would like to start tonight, if we can, please, with our two departing colleagues. So, I'd like to start, if I may, with Mayor Freeling. Is there anything you would like to say?
A wonderful, joyous four years. I've made friends, but you're right, you also make enemies, because everybody has someone to hear what you have to say, that they don't want to agree with. But, and we know my favorite one, I couldn't see the meter, the blue meter at night. Like, one, wait a minute, hold up. Also, I want to say this, I enjoyed working with the Police Department, and when you see them on the streets, wave at them. They are out there. They put their life on their lot, on the line every day. And that was one of the things they said. They said, Rita, people just don't, people ignore us. I'm always hanging out in my car, and I think you guys know this. I'm hanging out in my car, and we know I can't drive, but I'm hanging out in my car waving. Don't you sink your head like that. Anyway, yeah. Acknowledge your police department. They do a lot for you. And I mean, I just think saying hi to them. Chad and I are going to meet this week, hopefully, for a smooth transition. I'll tell him. But you don't have a lot of help. The job is what you make it. It is. The job is what you make it. There is no assistant staff. You work. Also, I'd like to acknowledge people in Gettysburg, how many people knew Bill Smith? Bill Smith was a stalwart of our community. He helped the AME Zion Church. He passed away last week. And it was a beautiful ceremony, and I laughed about Bill Smith. If you think I'm high maintenance, my Aunt Mickey was really high maintenance, and he took care of her when she had Alzheimer's. Didn't take a penny, came into the house, fixed her breakfast. He was just a good person in this community. And then he got another little secret. I moved in. I'm high maintenance. He had to take care of both of us. It's like, Bill, I don't know how you do that, but I just wanted to acknowledge him. He helped keep that church going in this community for years. Also, the trip to Japan was nice. That was fascinating. Do you know, we only saw one piece of graffiti? And they don't have trash cans on the street, but you could eat off the streets. Don't ask me, there were no trash cans. We did all of our research before. And it was just a wonderful meeting to talk about the three, as they call the important battlefields of the world: Sakagahara, Gettysburg, and Waterloo. It was just a learning experience, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a junket. What we did was figure ways to bring visitors into Sakagahara, Gettysburg, and Waterloo, and how to increase participation, and how we can share things on about how to bring people into our town for commerce and to bring revenue in. There's a source of revenue. There's a source of revenue. So, let's see. I just wanted to say that. Chad, I look forward. He's asked me if I will help in any way. Of course, I will if I'm here. I'm going to be spending time in Manhattan with my niece. But it's just been a wonderful experience. I'm glad I met a lot of nice people, worked with a lot of nice people, and now I get to say it. I get to drop the mic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patty?
Thank you, President Moon. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege these last eight years, serving on Borough Council. I want to thank the residents of the Borough, especially the voters in Ward 1. I look at my colleagues here. I want to thank all of you. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you and a real privilege. And I look and I, we started this year with three women council members, and we have one remaining. And so, I am just calling that attention to everyone's attention, because I know that we have about five or six people that are interested in the at-large seat. And I, I know that you'll be interviewing those candidates next month, and, and I believe that there will be some women in the pool. I hope they, there will be, and I hope that you'll give them some serious consideration, given the population of Gettysburg. I said in my earlier comments in terms about the diversity in this community, and I think our council needs to reflect the diversity of the community. And so, I wish you luck with that. I'll just say one thing to the media, present company excluded, Richard, I'm not talking to you directly, but it has been said, and this is interesting as a woman councilwoman, and maybe as an older council representative, but I have been, it's been mentioned several times by editors, both online and print editors, that I, I actually take a lot of my direction from our manager, who I have, hold in the highest esteem, Charles Gable. And he may think that he might have some persuasion, but he knows that he doesn't. But I just want to say, as I, as I spoke this evening and, and previous months, I, all of these are words from me and not from Mr. Gable. So, it's kind of an interesting, it's been interesting as a woman, serving as a public servant in government. And so, I just want to put a word out there to all of the editors out there to think about that when you are looking and, and writing about council members. And so, all of these words that I've, I've spoken the last eight years have been mine. Since I mentioned Mr. Gable, I want to just say that it's been a pleasure working with him as the Borough Manager and all the staff: John Whitmore, Robbie Harbaugh, Chad Claybaugh, who's our engineer, and the others on staff. And it's been a pleasure with Chris Evans as our, as our officer in charge. And it's been a pleasure with Chris Evans as our Officer in Charge. And I want to say that our Borough staff is small but very mighty, and they do a lot. And I served during COVID, and I watched what Charles did in terms of keeping this Borough solvent and running in the black during that time, when a lot of small municipalities our size were really struggling and heading towards bankruptcy. And I sometimes think that it's unfair, the amount of pressure and comments that are made, especially to our manager. And I thank you for sticking with us, because it's not always easy. And I just want to say my appreciation to all the staff. And Sarah Stahl, who answered so many questions for me, for the whole eight years, I think, you know. Anyway, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, any other elected officials' comments? We can start down at the end here with Ella, if you have anything you'd like to say about your first couple of months, or you can pass, that's fine, too.
Yeah, it's been really fun. I still feel like my face gets red whenever I talk, but we're working on it. And yeah, I've been able to learn so much. I really look up to all of you. Whenever I see you in the community, please say hi. I know we see each other on campus and Gizmo a lot. I'm really going to miss you. But yeah, it's been so wonderful. And also, thank you to the staff as well. I met you all first, and you were all so welcoming and so accommodating, and answer all of my questions, so I really appreciate that, and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
Will you be joining us next semester as well?
I will.
Excellent.
Yes.
Can you think, Peter? I'm not a long-winded speaker, but I'll just say that the two years that I've been on, I was very happy coming in, and everyone gave me a very fair shake at getting to know who I was and how I looked at things, and I always felt very welcomed by everyone on council. And those of you who will be on next year, I look forward to working with you. And those of you leaving, I wish you all only the best, and I thank you for your service and hope to continue our professional relationships as we continue to grow as a community, and you hopefully will continue to give us support and advice that you have and on future topics and things that are going to be important to the town. So, thank you, and that's it.
Thanks. Anyone down here?
Yeah. So first, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Freeling, for your work as Mayor, and for cracking the glass ceiling and opening up those doors for other women to take positions of power. So thank you. And enjoy your time in Manhattan with your family and with your cats.
Your dogs.
And dogs. Oh, I forgot about the dogs. Yeah, I forgot about the dogs. But anyway, enjoy your time, and thank you so much for all you do. And of course, I need to thank Patty Lawson as well. I appreciate the fact that you helped me to navigate both the Still Waters and the Turbulent Waters, and really have showed me the way as a member of council. And finally, thank you to the rest of the council members, welcome, Bill. But I really appreciate working with all of you. I couldn't have hand-selected a better group of people to serve with. So, thank you.
I want to start a comment of appreciation and gratitude to Patty Lawson. It seems like it wasn't that long ago that we were going door-to-door together eight years ago, and you think, wow, eight years, huh? And you mentioned COVID and a lot of the challenges that we've had since then. And even though we had contentious discussion tonight, like all eight years, we can say with all the different councils that we've been on, we still maintain and engage in civility and leave it go here. We argue and debate, and the public has to know that we don't take it personally, there's no animus toward each other. And I really appreciate everything that you've done. Just a personal thing, it means a lot to me. When my parents passed, I remember the thoughtfulness that you gave me. So thank you, I'll always remember that. So good luck, you know, in the future, and call or talk anytime.
Don't see me walking around town.
Okay, great. Okay. And I want to say thank you to the Mayor. We've really become friends, and I appreciate our friendship, and I appreciate the challenge that you faced as Mayor, and all the work that you did with the transition, with the last Mayor to this one. And I wish you all the best, and of course, I'm always here for you, too. And feel free to call me anytime, and you need anything, just let me know. All right. That's right.
Echoing what everyone at the table has said, Mayor Freeling, I've crossed paths with you many times publicly, and you've been a wonderful face to this community. And congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Ms. Larson, also, congratulations, thank you for your many duck steps that you've taken for the community, and keep quacking. And we'll just give a shout out for Robbie and Sergeant Evans for New Year's Eve coming up. They're going to be doing the same effort that they did for the Christmas Festival. It'll be a much bigger and better festival than last year.
Again, I'll echo what my colleagues have already stated. I look forward to meeting with Mayor Freeling this week. And Ms. Lawson, you will be missed, but I know that you will... Or just a phone call away, and a coffee chat, and a walk-in with the dogs together. So I look forward to that. Anytime someone serves in public office, and I never thought I would have, anytime someone serves in public office, they step into shoes that... And a lot of responsibility, and a lot of people say it's a thankless job. But anytime that someone has served as many years as you and Mr. Berger have served, and I know that we've had council before us that have served longer than that, that is a wealth of knowledge. And immediately thinking of John Lawver, there's a wealth of knowledge there. Even when you leave these seats, as someday we will, I hope that the future councils and the future generations of Gettysburg can call on you. John Lawver knows where all the bodies are buried, and I hope that we can call on you to find out all of that information and more. But thank you so much for your service. Again, as has already been stated, thank you to our Police Department, all of our departments, but especially our Police Department, Public Works, Parking Department. I saw all three of those departments out on the streets, helping with the Christmas Festival, as they do every year. I appreciate that. And just for the public knowledge, Elizabeth, I'm going to put you on the spot. So you have great comments and questions whenever you are here with us, and I thank you for being here. What happens then, though? Are you also taking all of that back to the campus as a liaison and educating the campus as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Could you talk about that? Because I think a lot of the public doesn't know what the junior council member does.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I was appointed by the Student Senate Executive Board, so I went into Student Senate, which is our governing body essentially, and took with them the concern... Some of the concerns that I think affect the college. I also take notes every meeting, and then I send it to the President of the student body, and he reads those notes every week at Student Senate. And then if anybody has specific questions for me, they know me, they just email me. Or I'll meet with sometimes higher admin, like for housing, I know I was talking about that with our Director of Residential Education and the fraternities and everything. So, yes, it does go back, and there's like a weekly report, and then I do go in whenever I have time. But they keep asking.
And they know if they have any questions, concerns, comments, they can always contact us, but they can certainly pass them on to you to get to us. Thank you.
All right. So one thing I do want to highlight is something I overheard Charles say earlier today at the Stormwater meeting, that he didn't then reiterate when he was talking about Senator McCormick's visit in this later meeting, is that there was a point in the discussion where the Senator had this moment where he realized that one of the many things that makes this community truly unique is that we are tiny, we do have a massive influx of visitors, but we are completely surrounded. We cannot grow outward. And the way you described it earlier, it kind of sounded like there was this aha moment where like, oh yeah, you guys are kind of behind the eight ball here in so many ways. So I am hopeful that that does affect his willingness to advocate for us in this next round of grant funding. But I also want to just really underscore that for all of the people who might be feeling consternation on the way this zoning vote went tonight. Some of the challenges we have in funding this government are really just structural and weird and so hard to overcome. You know, we're a small town, almost half of our real estate is untaxable, almost half of our population is below the poverty line. We really have to be mindful at all times of how the economic decisions we make impact people from all stratas. And, sir, I'm glad you're still here. I wanted to just say that, you know, for three years, we held taxation level using ARPA money to do that. And unfortunately, we're out of ARPA money, and in that time, we also made some decisions that, you know, are expensive, like adding personnel in the Police Department is expensive. And I hope you'll grab my card on the way out, it's in the lobby, if you wanted ahead of a discussion about how we come to some of these decisions, I'm happy to...
Can I speak?
Give me one moment, but we'll come back to public comment here in a second. But we do not tax people lightly, and I think what we did here today is take an important step for expanding that tax base, and I'm hoping that in time, we'll start to see that this was to alleviate pressure on a broader swath of our population here. As we close out this year, the list of things we have accomplished over the last two years is really pretty amazing. We have worked hard, we have crossed a lot of stuff off this list. And when I say we, I mean these people. We provide a permission structure, and these folks, they do the work. And the debt of gratitude we have for our staff can never be expressed fully enough. And it's meaningful to be part of a body that is responsible for actually getting shit done. Rita, you did something here in these last few years which was absolutely critical and absolutely crucial, and that is you forced dialogue, you forced collaboration, and we are keeping the doors you opened, we're going to keep them open, and I want to say thank you for laying the groundwork for that. It was absolutely necessary, so thank you. Yes, we will, ma'am, yes, we will. So, thank you. And Patty?
You don't have to say anything else. I love you, Patty. Thank you for your service.
That's going to take us back to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda. Please feel free to use the podium, please state your name and address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes.
Do I have to raise my hand?
Oh, come on over, just come on over.
Yeah, I've got a metal leg.
Okay.
I wonder, you just spoke about it, when does Mr. Morrison start paying property taxes?
I'm sorry, I don't know who you mean.
Developer, owner of land.
Well, that sort of is up in the air.
Ten-year abatement?
I'm sorry?
Ten-year property tax abatement for the state?
There is an abatement program on that parcel, but he has to come up with a development that would qualify for the abatement, so that's still being kind of worked out between him and the planning commission.
And then after before ten years, he sells it to the college, it'll pay property taxes either.
They actually do voluntarily pay property taxes on everything that is not part of their institutional parcel.
And they've done that for about 30 years, actually.
And they're sitting on a $220 million endowment?
I don't know the current endowment.
They voluntarily pay taxes, and they are the largest taxpayer in the Borough of Gettysburg.
And I just want you all to know, I'm not complaining about property taxes. I don't like the knee-jerk thing with rates taxes.
No.
I'm sure you looked at other things, and I know the complications, but half the property's untaxable. But I wasn't talking about myself. I have a 79-year-old neighbor, she's a widow, and she wants to stay in her home, she's living on Social Security survivor benefits, $2,000 a month pay cut. And you could live on $2,000 a month, still pay your bills? No. So her house has fallen down, she wants to stay in there. She came to me this summer for $800 some dollars to pay her property tax. And I didn't want to see her thrown out in the streets, so she has no one, no family or anyone to give her money. Then her furnace failed last, beginning last winter. I paid to have her furnace, 40-year-old furnace, a tree she couldn't afford to trim knocked the chimney off the top of her house. That was venting her 40-year-old furnace. So I bought her a new furnace, had it installed, trimmed the trees and captured chimney, fixed her car cover, I think I remember $6,000 in a year, just so she can stay in her house. And that's what I meant about pushing people out of Borough, because she's going to lose that place. And also, keeping people out. How many young families do you know that have bought a house in the district and not own family wealth, mommy, daddy?
Right.
Because they won't, because the taxes are so high. And I know you're a teenager, and income's strange, you don't have that much. You've got a lot of expenses. And work fixes sidewalks around here. And how many people I've seen fall and hurt themselves? A lot of elderly people, visitors, tourists. So that's the reason I raised it. I was three years Army, militarily staffed in high school, and 30 years Secret Service down in DC. And I know all of that, because I hung around people that all used to have to do budgets and everything else, and it's a tough job, I appreciate that. But it's the only reason I mention it. I don't know if you guys know this is going on, but income is not keeping up with inflation. And your taxation, I already mentioned, is over 8%, 4% or 6% inflation for 2025, but more than the rate of inflation reported by federal government. And everyone's falling behind. It just came up with a 2.6% increase in Social Security, and so now you fall 2% behind every year for 10 years. You just took a 20% pay cut. Would anyone in here take a 20% pay cut right now? And still pay your bills?
Sir, I'll just say that...
I'm not done.
No, 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 I'll just say this, I wish you had been here for our budget deliberations, because we talk about this all the time. We talked about how, for the last three years, I had to vote to raise my own taxes higher than...
That I would.
Higher than my pay increase at work. So we all totally get this, absolutely. But I do hope you'll grab my card, and we can talk more.
Okay, but I just want you to know, don't look at me like I'm some greedy guy.
No, no, sir.
I don't like paying taxes, it's like you.
Can I add something to that?
...that other house and retired people, they're losing money every year because they're coldest or keeping up with inflation taxes.
Can I add something to what you're saying?
Mayor?
It can happen to anybody. I have a medication that I have to pay. Where am I going to get $635 extra a month? It happens to all of us.
That's absolutely right.
And I mean, it's just, I understand what you're saying. And also, my basement flooded. I'm having fun.
I'm going to return us to the public comment structure. I'm going to return us to the public comment structure if we're going to go over here.
Hi, Alana Anderson. I want to speak because of what was just brought up here. So I work for SCAP, 153 North Stratton Street. And, sir, I would love to invite you to conversations for the organization that I work for, which is called At Home in Adams County. We literally talk about this. I'm actually very grateful that you brought this up. Aging in place is very clearly a critical issue that is tied very much with food insecurity, housing insecurity, transportation. So please, we would love to have you as part of these larger conversations. We have a transportation work group, a housing work group. We have data collected. This is also an excellent time, per the rezoning ordinance that y'all have just engaged with. At home, Megan and I would love to be a resource for you in terms of these larger conversations about aging in place and attainable housing. That is my mission number one for 2026. We want to have municipal workshops where we can have thorough conversations. Please, please turn to us in those instances. So that's that. I also want to touch very lightly on something that was brought up on the agenda, that was the liquor license. I know there's going to be a public hearing. I feel compelled to just put this out there now. This is through my second job as, working for the college as a student resource officer. I cannot emphasize enough how much I hate the idea of liquor being even more accessible for our students. I'm sure that the police can report to issues with students drinking of legal age and not. I have a student who's no longer on campus because of alcohol issues. And I cannot imagine easier access at a vape store and the partnership that that kind of license would provide. That is so close to the college. Let's not make it easier for poor choices at a critical age. Thank you.
Public comment. All right, seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody.